I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, June 9th. And Commissioner Rulon, if you could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Petches, if you'd please call the roll.
Commissioner Eggleston.
Here.
Commissioner Barnes.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chair Darden.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Rulon.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith is absent.
Okay, that, uh, let's see, we have no minutes to approve tonight, so that brings us to oral and written communications. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Eileen, do we have any cards?
Yes, we do. Oh, for oral?
Yes.
Sorry. You didn't manage to, not for oral, just for the item.
Okay, all right, then that brings us to the public hearing process. Pardon me. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting, for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And, um, I had a, uh, I had a thought. Um, I believe last time we invited public comment at the beginning of the meeting so that people didn't need to wait, so I thought perhaps we'd want to do that again tonight. And then after that, John will lead us through, uh, basically, he'll give us an overview and then lead us through a page-by-page turn. Um, and we'll be beginning with, uh, Chapter Four, uh, and then, uh, we'll go through, and just the changes to Chapter Four since our last review, and then Chapters Five, Six, and Seven, and then, at that point, if, um, you know, it's, it's not, oh, you know, oh, you know, midnight or some ungodly hour, um, then we can work back through and answer any questions that any of the commissioners have about Chapters One, Two, and Three, and the changes that we made during the last meeting. So, um, I'd just like us to stay kind of focused so that we can move through this quickly because we do have a lot of material. So with that said, um, I will, I guess the, the public hearing's already opened since it was continued, so I don't need to open the public hearing. Is that correct? Okay. Um, so at this time, I'd like to, um, oh, gosh, let's see if I can do it. Alex Manscalco.
Alex.
Marasino.
I try so hard.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Alex Manscalco, uh, from Lofton Firm, on behalf of Capistrano Shores. Members of the Planning Commission, um, we've provided correspondence tonight, apologize for the, um, late timing, we, it's quite a lengthy document that dropped on Friday afternoon. Our, our comments are focused essentially on, uh, concern that, at the last meeting, uh, we had initially provided comment, and the Planning Commission stated the, uh, understanding or intention that we would work through City Attorney's Office who would discuss with staff. We provided the comments through staff, uh, through, through the City Attorney's Office, um, and spoken with them, and they're aware we're submitting this tonight, uh, because it appears a bunch of the changes were not included yet, um, even some of the ones that we believe were non-controversial. So, uh, we wanted to, uh, urge the commission to, um, withhold approval and submit it all to the City Council tonight, uh, and allow staff more time to, um, discuss and perhaps communicate back through the City Attorney's Office to us, and let us know, you know, substantively, uh, their reactions to our comments. Uh, in short, the communication, uh, summarizes that our primary concern or conflict between the Mobile Home Parks Act and, and Mobile Home Law, and the Coastal Act, and how that's reconciled in this document. Um, and, at some level, some of the problems become nonsensical, uh, and, and the result that could come out of the coastal, uh, the, uh, local coastal program, we think, are concerning. Um, and we don't think it, it needs to be that, and I believe the City Attorney, uh, at least understood that, of course, he would never, uh, agree with us. Um, so, we've, uh, submitted those comments, ask you, ask you to withhold action tonight and, uh, instruct staff to, um, meet with the City Attorney and, uh, if possible, communicate comments back through us. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And then Cheryl Mo.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I would concur that I would like you to, it's a lengthy document, I've, things have been added, I haven't had a chance to look through it all, but, uh, to give it another meeting would be, um, very helpful. Um, I was able to meet with Mr. Petches about, uh, my concern, and, um, did assure me that, because I have an existing agreement with the city, with existing setbacks, that the city would work to maintain those setbacks. Um, I do have concerns because I am near what could be termed a waterway, but it's really a drainage easement that does take on water twenty-four-seven of urban runoff, so there is development, so I'm concerned with what setbacks would be put on that. Um, here, it would, twenty feet would be actually sufficient for what's happened before. Um, so, you do have my public comment in the attachment. I also wanted to reiterate, um, Mr. McGreevy's comments on Item Six and Eight, to really look at what kind of hardships these lots, because these are all developed lots except for one particular, um, coastal canyon that has open space. What that means to creating non-conforming parcels in what was conforming puts a very large burden on property owners, and it's an undue hardship compared to what is done across the street where somebody may be able to subdivide, and it has the same effect on canyon and traffic and properties as that. Um, so I would just like to continue to work with staff to resolve those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this matter? Okay, all right, then we'll close the public comment portion of the evening, um, and, um, it, it might interest you to know that I believe staff is going to recommend that we continue this item tonight, so, um, I, I'm sure that pleases you both. Okay, John Champa, are you ready to lead us down the, the winding path of the land use plan?
Yes, definitely. Um, so just to give everyone a little background from, uh, where we left off on, uh, May 12th was, we were able to get through Chapter Four, um, and had remaining chapters in Five through Seven, however, uh, following the meeting, we received additional comments from the Coastal Commission regarding, uh, the biological section, water quality, uh, the hazards section, Chapter Six, and, uh, or, I'm sorry, hazards is Chapter Five, uh, Chapter Six as well as Chapter Seven, so, we've incorporated all of those, and all of the modifications, uh, additions have been, um, added with the highlighting on there to help, you know, um, facilitate your review and focus in time on those particular sections, so, um...
The microphone's not on.
Highlight yellow is actually the Coastal Commission's comment.
Coastal Commission, Planning Commission.
Okay, it's all of it.
It's, it's all of the above, so, all of those have been incorporated, uh, into this latest draft, uh, and so, with that being said, uh, we're going to start with Chapter Four. So just let me know if, if there are any comments on any of the particular, uh, sections as we roll through them, and we can stop and, and discuss or, uh, recommend any, uh, edits or modifications. So...
With particular focus on the changes, right, on Chapter Four, because we've already reviewed it.
Yes, yes.
So, Chapter Four, you'll be going to, is it Four-Dash-Three? Where's the section with the...
Yeah, I believe the water quality begins, is the, well, first, just, uh, I'd like to note that we modified the, um, coastal, or the, um, the biological study areas. Uh, we modified those maps to reflect the, um, change from potential ESHA area to habitat study areas, and that's also been reflected throughout the policies, the, the applicable policies for, you know, new or potential developments, so, all of that has been addressed to, um, eliminate that, uh, that trigger word.
So, is that why the change was made? Is it ESHA's, uh, is, uh, ESHA, is it ESHA?
Tomato.
Yeah.
Traumatic.
I, I, I'm just wondering why that change was made? Is it, you know, is it, is it kind of a matter of just semantics, and people have issue with it, so we change it and that goes away, or...
Yeah, I think that, that, that is one of the main elements of it, is that, the concern that, you know, the Coastal Commission or someone may, um, say, well, well, this is ESHA, or, you know, potential ESHA, and really, it's all going to be based, dependent upon an, uh, an environmental study that'll be done by a biologist for projects within these areas, so, uh, the biological inventory wasn't, um, detailed enough and didn't have the access to clearly state whether there was, um, uh, definitely ESHA in the area. That's why, um, it's, it's more appropriate to identify it as potential habitat.
Okay.
Yep, uh, and to further that, uh, this comment, I think, was, is in the minutes of the Coastal Advisory Committee meeting on the ESHA study on, in this Chapter Four, which we just did about a month ago, because it was not presented to the committee in January, and there was concerns about the DUDEX study where, and like we discussed before, some of the grasses noted in the canyon are not endangered, therefore, yet, all of a sudden, there's a, a potential ESHA, and so, the committee had a concern that that's a step too far, when a lot of our, our canyons are not very pristine anymore, and so, we recommended out of that committee to rename it this Habitat Study Area, because when you really read the details of the DUDEX study, that, uh, there's a lot of questions that came out of what the, uh, you know, the botanist or the botanical experts, wherever, tried, who've tried to get into the canyons and couldn't, uh, took a, a giant leap for mankind, in our, our view, from, if you look at Toledo Canyon, and there's nothing in there, then why do we have it as a potential ESHA? And so, this is what came out of that comment from that committee. Okay. And are we still looking at improving these maps? Because when we, when you look at them and try to zoom in on them, they're, they're, the resolution's not that good on the legends and things like that.
Um, yeah, I mean, the, the, one of the problems is, is this, this electronic copy of that, this copy, it's all scanned in, so, we're not actually able to use a...
I see.
...concerned that, uh, the quality will be much higher, it's just, the way the document is prepared, uh, you know, with a hard copy, it's just, it's, it's not really... Unless we do a much larger map, which, you know, uh, I think we would pull together just for the, the Planning Commission's reference, you know, at a, at a future meeting. But, once we have an electronic version, similar to the general plan, we'll be able to zoom way in and really get, uh, much better detail.
Okay, very good.
Bonnie?
Uh, I just wanted to disclose that I, uh, I missed the May 13th meeting, because I was at the Coastal Commission hearing for the Alternative Parking Lot Plan, but I did watch the video, and I went over all the attachments, and, um, I was given some height of limitations that should go on Table Two, two-one by, uh, resident El Cullen from Shorecliffs, and I brought that along. If there's time, we can go over it. My understanding is we are working from, uh, Chapter Five onward, or Four.
There's changes to Four. Only, only the changes that were made to Chapter Four, and then, um, and then, and then Five, Six, and Seven, and then, uh, if there are additional issues for Chapter One, Two, and Three, new issues, I'm sorry, One, Two, Three, and then also Four, uh, new issues for Four, we'll come back to those either in this hearing or the next one.
I have forty-two.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to be here the last time.
Okay, and, um, Bonnie, can you move your coat can for me so I can see Wayne, unless you want him to be silent for the whole evening, which...
That would be a good idea.
Which would be a, which would be a public tragedy.
Are we going over Four now?
We're going over the changes, um, that were made by the Coastal Commission, um, and applied, uh, to Chapter Four. Um, any other issues to Chapter Four will either take at the end of this meeting, or if we, uh, continue to another meeting.
Too bad.
That doesn't mean we won't hear them, we're just, we're just hearing them in a particular order.
Okay.
Okay, so...
For the record, John, like, you're already at four-twenty-two, oh, four-twenty-two, but I got four-nine, all was highlight yellow, new stuff, uh, was that provided, uh, by the Coastal Commission, I guess, or staff, or it was totally different than before?
On four-nine, this was something that the Coastal Commission staff requested, some, uh, description and information on our watershed drainage channels.
Oh, yes, this is important.
So that's been provided here.
Okay.
The two channels that we have, and then...
Can you tell me what M-O-one means and M-O-two means?
Um, you know, I was looking for that before, but, uh, I think that's our, our identifier for the, the particular drainage channels. I was looking at that and was unable to get that on information prior to...
Commissioner Brown is nodding.
Yeah, that's pretty standard with the Coastal Committee.
So can you put in the text?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
When you get that information, that was one of, a couple of my things.
Yes, Wayne. Now your button doesn't even want to work.
San Clonie Watershed and Drainage Channels, are those also drainage channels that are underneath the canyon, or buried in the canyon itself?
Uh, no, these are only identifying the two channels, which are the, at the north end of town, um, uh, near the Shorecliffs, uh, or the Poche Beach.
Are they, are they buried in the ground?
In places, they are, they are.
Okay, so you're listing all the watershed drainage channels here?
Just the, uh, the two covered channels, yeah.
So you're not listing, uh, Trafalgar Canyon, which has a drainage channel?
We don't have that listed. They asked for the, the watershed points, and it was, it, the information that was provided to me were these two particular drainage channels. There is another one, we can add the Trafalgar or any other, uh, drainage channels from the watersheds.
Uh, because the Trafalgar Chan, uh, Trafalgar Canyon does drain, uh, at, at a certain point toward the railroad tracks out there.
Yeah, these are the main, uh, watershed areas that they wanted listed. We, you know, there's lots of our Royals, all the Marblehead Canyons, you know, probably fifteen or eleven, if you want, I forgot was what they asked to do.
Ribby comes quite a ways, yeah, it goes all the, golf course, I think. This Montalvo didn't go very far. Okay.
Okay.
I think this is fine.
So, nothing else on four-ten? So then we move to the next set of changes.
So we have the maps, as I, as I said, and then, uh, this is, uh, on page four-sixteen is just a, a change in reference, uh, the policy numbers, updating those.
This will probably change again.
Uh, this is just a deletion, uh, recommended by the Coastal Commission on one of their, uh, sections from the Coastal Act.
Mm-hmm.
And then jumping into the policies, here you see the changes in the references from potential ESHA to potential habitat study area to be consistent with the recommendation. And then, these are some, um, additional, uh, text and deletion that was recommended by the Coastal Commission.
All throughout the pages...
So the ESHA, wait a minute, let's see, so, on the ESHA buffer, okay, the numbers still stay the same, twenty-five feet, ten, finally a hundred. You're cool with that, that's good.
Yes, they, uh, actually, they, this is what was recommended by the biological inventory, so we're sticking with that. They did provide us a comment asking, uh, or saying that we should consider doing the one-hundred-foot, um, but based on the biological inventory, I think we're proposing this, at this point in time, also, this is, um, I believe, consistent with the setback and buffer areas for coastal canyons.
Yeah, I, no, I'm totally, totally in agreement, I just, so, I'm happy they're letting it slide for so far, I mean, I hope it stays in there until the final, you know, arm wrestling endgame, but...
I think, I think you mean you're, you're happy they saw the rationale behind the selection of those, uh, buffer...
I stand corrected and go with Chair Darden's comments here. And, John, um, are you able to zoom in on that text a little bit, just to make it a little larger? If it's a hundred, make it a hundred-and-fifty. I could see it better, and probably people on video could see it better, too. That's great, thanks.
Good idea.
Uh, just to let everybody know, I still have concerns with these buffer areas, um, because, a little bit about, you know, what Cheryl Mo talked about, and the potential of creating, if, if, the, the threshold for, for, uh, the Coastal Commission to, uh, identify a, a wetland is very low compared to, like, some of the other, like, the fish and, uh, game criteria, so I'm concerned that if there's a wetland identified in the bottom of a coastal canyon, and you have your fifty-foot buffer, you're creating an undevelopable lot.
Mm-hmm.
So I want to work with the Coastal Commission staff to create, you know, some ability for us to modify the distances so that we're not, you know, unreasonably penalizing people that already have houses on coastal canyons, and, and the wetland is not what we would consider pristine. We're not talking about, you know, uh, you know, an actual wetland like, uh, they have in the South or North County, San Diego and those places, where it's habitat area, they were talking about small little strips, you know, sometimes a foot wide.
So you want to, you have another change you envision to put in here in this area?
Well, I think I want to talk about having some flexibility and a standard so that we can deal with those particular instances, and, and identify the, the width of the buffer based on the value of the habitat area, so having some flexible scale.
So that would fit in this chapter? So, that would fit in this Chapter 4 here somewhere, then? And you're going to get that developed before we approve this and send it out to council, then, somehow?
We're probably going to come back with some kind of a modification on that. If the Planning Commission agrees with me to pursue that.
Yeah, I think that's important to do, especially when they're habitats that are created by, you know, urban runoff, and, and they weren't, they weren't originally intended to be a wetland. I think, and I think your idea of a scale that, you know, reflects the value of the habitat makes a lot of sense.
What's the, what's our consultant? She thinks that that could be a doable, doable thing, or...
I don't know if it, I don't know if it's going to be accepted by the Coastal Commission, but I think we should at least try. I, I haven't heard a lot of promise, when the Coastal Commission has a standard, and they do it the same way everywhere. We really have to convince the argument to explain why we want it to vary.
So, why don't we craft something and put it in here, and ask for forgiveness instead of permission?
Oh, you could, no, no, no.
Well, I think that we would only do, we would do it with an explanation of why it would be less. So, I...
They'll catch it.
I'll reach out with...
I know, I'm not saying we're going to...
My goal would be to reach out to them and talk to them about our issue and our concern, and for them to help us maybe provide some kind of a more flexible standard in certain instances. Maybe it's a rare instance, but at least we'd have that built in.
Okay.
Wayne?
No.
Okay. Proceed, John.
So, as I said here, for this 423, at the bottom of the page, this was just additional text requested by the Coastal Commission.
I have this issue on the, when you get...
425.
When you get to Page 425, yeah, on this Res 4...
So, uh...
Or Res 7, I should say.
Res 7, this modification was to reflect the recommendation from the Planning Commission based on the last meeting, in that it wasn't to provide, not encroach any closer into the ESHA buffer, but to provide an increased setback buffer from...
Did it come from us? Because this is very open-ended, like, how much?
Well, that's the thing, is we didn't have anything, you know, at that point, and so, I think a lot of that would be dependent upon the site, the circumstances, and, and would be addressed in the IP. One of the things that I, in the Coastal Advisory Committee's recommendation was to contact other cities to see lessons learned, issues that they've had. And one of the things that they said was, they, a couple of cities had a real problem with being a little too specific in the, in the LUP and the IP, or, in the LUP, and so, when they're going through their, the adoption of their IP, the Coastal Commission's using their LUP as the basis for the review, and some of the standards were more detailed than they wanted to provide, or if things were changed, then they didn't have that flexibility anymore. So, they recommended that we put in what's, what's essential and necessary, but not to provide anything that wasn't that, because otherwise, we may wish later on that we didn't provide that particular information, so...
That came from, you know, it's a blur of 200 pages here. This is the original wording, like, "does not encroach closer," probably would be more comfortable, I'd be more comfortable with, but rather than provide an increased setback buffer from the ESHA, which is just in for a dime, in for a dollar, you know, I...
Well, but it's...
That could be very open-ended comments, what I was trying to say. I know it's general, but it's very open-ended.
Yeah.
Some of the direction that we received initially from the Coastal Commission regarding this particular policy, or direction in regards to developing a policy such as this, they, the staff seemed to be okay with as long as the development wasn't encroaching any closer towards the ESHA. So, that's why we had it originally written the way that we did. The staff seemed to be supportive of that, because we had initial concern that, listen, we're creating all of these non-conformities, they can't, won't be able to do certain things, but they said, you know, as long as it's not encroaching any closer.
Well, then...
Then, I would recommend that we can reconsider. If the Coastal Commission is comfortable with that, where we go back to the original wording, maybe we were missed, you know, we're out of sequence with their comments, but I don't know what the commission, since the commission is...
Unless somebody has thoughts that, that make, suggests that that's ill-advised, I would be supportive of that as well. Does anybody have any thoughts contrary to that?
I'm thinking that maybe we could word it slightly different, to say that they not increased the encroachment. So, I mean, say that they're 25 feet from the buffer, but it's only, you know, 25 square feet of the building is within that 25-foot range. I would want to encourage the whole building to move forward, you know, and add a lot of square footage, 25 feet.
So, not increase the encroachment. That, that sounds, that sounds good to me. Is everybody doing that?
A little more specific, and more, a little bit more, somewhere in between the two.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, later, later in this chapter, I believe you have a similar policy that mirrors for, for the wetlands, so we'll just maybe consider that as we get to that policy.
Okay.
And then, in 10, referencing the habitat, potential Habitat Study Area, as previously discussed, light adjacent to ESHA, staff worked with Commissioner Rowland to provide a policy that was, that would, would cover this. This also addresses a comment that we received by the Coastal Commission staff on this. So, I think that one of the key things to mention is that, you know, a lot of the standards, specific standards will be called out in the implementation plan, so we can, you have this as a policy to, you know, lead into that and provide the specific standards.
I'll keep...
One thing, and thanks for working with me on this, I think it's, you know, I think it's an improvement over what we had before, give us more flexibility. One thing I was thinking possibly to add to this, to maximize flexibility we have, when we do create a dark sky ordinance, is to just, say, eliminate or shield indirect exterior lighting. That way, we have, it gives us the maximum flexibility to do what we might think is right, depending on the, the nature of the ESHA.
I think that that would be acceptable. Everybody else?
Yeah.
I think everybody's nodding.
All right, moving through it. We have just a couple of policy reference changes here for RES 24.
John, let me just ask the Commission, just in the interest of efficiency, during our last review, you didn't explain all the changes as we went through. We just went through to see if people had questions. So, it's probably more efficient if John doesn't stop to tell us each, why each change was made, or what it reflects. Do the commissioners feel the need to hear that background, or shall we just stop when we have questions?
I think we should stop when we have questions.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I, oh, you don't?
Well, if it gets done, then I'll have, go through like you said you wanted to do.
Okay, thank you.
But, do you have a comment on any of the pages that you've been reading? You should remember that we go through it.
That's what I wanted to do.
But, if there, well, our plan was, if there, if it's in the, if it's in the yellow, if it's in the change area.
And then, we come back after.
And then, we come back after.
Oh, okay, yeah, right.
Because we don't want to...
That's what she wants to do.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so we're on page, are you on 28?
Your pad?
Oh, 30.
430.
430? Any changes?
So, we are now approaching wetlands.
Done?
Yeah, 437, go back to that.
4, I'm not, I'm not quite there yet. 437? Page 437?
Res 37.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, does this increase setback, that's you want to reword that one again, like the other one, right, to just want to...
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That's not really a big change to that, I wonder, is that...
So, we will not increase the encroachment.
Mm-hmm.
He doesn't need your help, until he does. Three cylinders, 50 horsepower. Go bold, go powerful, go gator.
Clearly, the people in the audience got bored, took over control of the television.
All right.
Okay, so we're, 433, no changes?
Now, we're into water quality, 4...
Wetland mitigate Res 39. Can you go back? I'm sorry, you're going pretty quick, but are there some big changes? This came from Coastal Commission on the, on the ratio?
Yes, sir.
So, and then, my question then became, does this really measure up with, I think I have my notes inside here, Res 15, I think it is, I went way back, but do they match? Because I think your ratios all changed. This is, they kind of increased our ratios, is that correct, for the...
15, you said, you think it...
Yeah, Res 15, you've got, you know, 4.1, bernal ponds, coastal scrub. This is very detailed, thickets, and 2:1 ratios, and then, then the Coastal Commission, I guess, made these comments here, and raised the, and so, I don't know if these two paragraphs, the ratios all match, from what they changed, plus what you originally had in Res 15, which was untouched by us or by them, but has different ratios for lemon berries, and streams, and everything else. I just ask, I think you had to synchronize the two paragraphs, is all I'm saying.
Just take a look and make sure.
Between Res 15 and Res now 39, as modified by the Coastal Commission, they...
I'll look to make sure that we were consistent with those.
Yeah, I think they need to make sure we're all, they all match, or whatever.
Okay. So, then, page 34, 35, 36.
Yeah, 36, these are all pretty new, then, aren't they?
Yes, a lot of these are reflective of the Coastal Commission's water quality policies that we received.
Okay, so these are all new adds from our original, what we've seen before?
That's correct.
Okay.
And staff has reviewed this with our, our Engineering Division, water quality, to ensure that the staff is okay with these recommended policies.
And Mary Von Drack and company had no problems, then?
Yes, it's been reviewed with Mary Von Drack and Tom Bonniget.
Okay.
To ensure the city is, is...
Capable.
Capable of enforcing these, yes.
Okay, 36. 37? Oh, you went 36?
37, no question.
On the 85th percentile?
Yeah, this 85th percentile, that's a pretty big leap of man time, one giant step for man, right? Could you explain their rationale? This is a whole new concept, and this is, and Bonniget and company were, were...
Yes, I...
Comfortable with this?
I definitely relied heavily on Tom Bonniget and Mary Von Drack to assist me with the review of these water quality policies. And as this has been explained to me, is that the developments of water quality concern are similar to what other agencies identify as priority projects, which kick in at an additional level of review in terms of, you know, construction plans, as well as, you know, post-construction development, and what the measures need to be taken into account there, you know, referencing, you know, the absorption rate, taking into account volume, flow rate, timing, and duration. And a lot of these, you know, these policies were adjusted to address all of that, as well as this 85 percentile design storm drain standard, that was also reviewed with Tom and his staff to make sure that...
They think we can achieve that? I mean, this is like a 100-year storm, or a 50-year storm?
Similar to that, yes. The capacity for...
Yeah, and this is a really, really high chinning bar requirement that this is, that got entered in here. So, I don't know if the rest of the commission picked up on that, but that's a little, now, you're planning for a huge, you know, the 13 inches of rain in 10 days, we had like, four or five years ago type issue, situation. So, we're, we're really, really up in the chinning bar here, developments in mitigation and standards here. So, it's a very, very large requirement increase.
But, they're confident that we can handle that?
Yes, I actually was able to coordinate with the Coastal Commission Water Quality staff on this, and we went through actually two rounds of edits on this, to ensure that they were satisfied, and then also, our Engineering Division was satisfied. So, I think that it is mirroring the new standards that are out there, and so, they, Tom assured me that he is satisfied with the edits.
Thank you very much.
Good question, though, because, you know, it's important that we don't overstretch our abilities.
Absolutely. And, and just one thing to note, is that with these new low-impact development standards, which are heavily included on these projects of water quality concern, one of the, there's some of the language that's included in there is, you know, where applicable and where feasible, and knowing that, you know, you know, not all projects are the same, and in some situations, it would be difficult to incorporate those particular improvements necessary. And the Coastal Commission staff was very aware of that, as well as the Engineering Staff, so...
Okay. Now, this will probably be an outgrowth into our total zoning ordinance and building codes here very soon, because...
So, you're on 38?
Moving to 39.
Okay. We are apparently very in sync with the Coastal Commission, because we seem to be, we don't seem to be having a lot of concerns over these.
That, that was reassuring to find out with, with our staff, so...
I don't know if we have much of a choice.
I know, I know that we don't have a whole lot to say about this.
Yeah, I was going to say...
[laughing]
That's exactly, took the words out of my mouth.
You do have to remember, I'm in marketing, so...
The tail end of 440. So, now, we're in Section 4.3.5, Other Biological Resources. This is Res 47. Wayne, just want to let you know that we did provide additional language for consistency with our zoning ordinance.
And that'll also be in the IP.
That is correct.
So, then, we've got the buffers again, for 78.
Yes. Question on this one. I, when I was reading it, I'm looking at it again, make sure, read it correctly. And maybe I'm wrong. When I was reading this, I got the impression that we're saying, well, the buffer needs to be 100 feet, but if, but if it can't be 100 feet, then it needs to be 50 feet. And it's, if I'm correct on the way I was reading it, why wouldn't we want to say it would have to be, you know, something, if possible, greater than 50 feet? It's not like 100, and then drops to 50. If someone can do a 70-foot setback, we'd want them to do that, or am I reading that wrong?
Um, is, this policy was designed as to be 100 feet, and in certain circumstances, maybe if the, you know, the quality of the habitat isn't there, or if it's more urbanized habitat, then it could be reduced to 50, if it's not as, you know, sensitive of the habitat, and that would all be...
Yeah, I'm just, but it looks to me like we go, the increment is going from 100 feet to 50 feet, and if, if, you know, we could bring it back to 90, and that would do, then let's make it 90 instead of 100, rather than 50 instead of 100.
Yeah, so the language could be something like, reduced to as little as 50 feet, or something like...
Yeah, as little as, something like that, to indicate that we would want more than 50 if we, if it was feasible.
That's a good idea. Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll do that. I think we're getting towards the tail end of this Chapter 4.
Okay. All right, so, now, ready for totally new ground. Did you have something on Public Affairs, Bonnie?
Yes, I had a couple of items for Chapter 4.
Yes, I had a couple of items for chapter four. And so page 4.3, the second paragraph, it has.
These are to the changes, you mean?
No, these are the things that I found in addition to the changes.
Okay, we're gonna do that after we've gone through all the new material. So it might be tonight's meeting or it might be in the next meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna plow new ground, moving on to chapter five.
Chapter five, all new territories, so just let me know. We're gonna just continue to roll through this section.
There's, like, there's a whole section in here compared to the old one. Have you rearranged this chapter significantly from the last time we reviewed it?
Yeah, it's been, it's been rearranged, there was some repetitive text in there. And so staff and the Coastal Commission identified that.
Oh. Is that a fire alarm?
I think it's that, please.
Oh. Interesting, Jim, you're the only one who knew exactly what that sound was.
Are we on five, five-one still?
They're coming to get everybody that doesn't live. They're coming to get everybody that does not live in the city of San Clemente.
You know, it might, it might be helpful, John, at the start of these chapters, where there've been significant changes since our last reading, or maybe since members of the public have read it, to just indicate the origin of the changes and, you know, the major impacts on the sections.
Absolutely, so Bonnie, I think you had something for chapter one, so after.
Yeah, this is for one of the changes.
I'm sorry, page one.
Well, you have the first paragraph, five point one, it says, "And preferable, avoid." And it's, it should be, "And preferably avoid." Yeah, so you just want to change that from preferable to preferably.
Yes.
Okay.
So just to give you a little background in terms of the, it was really just a change in the organization of this, this, these first couple of sections. This five point one point one, it was just more intended to be a background section and then more detail will be provided later on. That's where you can see the strike through is actually just text that's been copied and pasted over, so.
Because I will admit, I had, I had a little difficulty flipping back and forth between my old version and the new version and following the changes, so.
All the way through.
It was fun to make the changes, too.
Okay, so you're on five-two.
Five-two.
Any questions or changes? Five-three. Four. Done.
Okay, this paragraph came from the Coastal Commission then?
Um, no, this, let's see. This was actually added by staff, they asked for some additional background information in terms of hazards that are within the.
Okay.
Oceanside area, and so that, this is what was crafted by staff to.
Okay.
Address their comment.
Should be Capitol Shores Mobile Home Park.
Capitol Shores Mobile Home Park, we've got the marine safety, the pier.
Sure.
Bathrooms, or beach, beach restrooms. We've got the coastal act policies. And you, just to, just to give the planning commission kind of an update, one of the items that was discussed at the last meeting was the references to the polit, the planning, I'm sorry, the coastal act policies at the beginning. And I did review with other coastal, or coastal land use plans. And the verbiage is consistent that we want to identify all of the coastal act policies that are applicable in these particular sections.
Oh, you're talking about, there was a comment from the public talking about.
Yes.
It's, it, we might be excluding policies if we're not listing them all. And, and so what was our strategy in doing that? And so that's, you're saying that that is the, the standard for, for most, most plans?
That's correct. And in a couple of circumstances, we've actually added some additional, you know, verb, sections in that have been recommended by the Coastal Commission staff. So they're ensuring that we are including all of the applicable policies as well as our consultants.
Okay, all right, thank you, John.
So just to give you a little background on this first section and some background on the changes that were made, or first section, five point three point one, is the Coastal Commission staff recommended consolidating some of these sections so that we've got the coastal bluff and shoreline development, whereas before we had coastal, or development in hazard areas, and then we had shoreline development. And a lot of their comments were related to the, just the organization of this and maybe kind of bringing some of the sections together. And so this is what we've done in terms of merging some of these. So you could, you'll see that in some of the policies we have identified where it was, you know, once just shore or bluff, and now the shore and bluff, or bluff and coastal canyon. So those were intended to just create some more uniformity throughout.
Are we on five-seven here?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, what about five-four, has four?
Has four was. Has four was a comment from the Coastal Commission. And we included that to be consistent with the zoning ordinance that we have currently in place. I think with Bonnie's comment in recommending, actually, we should just remove the reference to table two point one, since there are no setbacks. And we don't want to include setbacks because that's something that we should be including in the IP. So I would just recommend eliminating the reference to the table.
Yeah, that's, that's what I noticed, it does say, "Look at the table two-one for the underlying zoning district setbacks." And that's on page two-nine through two-seventeen. And there's no entries for any setbacks at all on any of those pages.
That's correct.
Or an entry for beachfront setback. So we either add them all in and, or as John recommends, not putting it in at all and save for the IP. But I just wanted to mention, as long as we were referring back, all of those pages need to have headings on them, John? The pages in the table, yes, there's only one header on the first page at two-nine, but it'd be really helpful for people to understand the columns that they're reading down is if we would put the header on each page, please.
Absolutely.
Two-nine through two-seventeen.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so no objection to eliminating this reference, it sounds like. I don't see anybody jumping up and down, so. So we're on five-eight. Any changes, five-nine? Jim?
Yeah, has thirteen? I'm just, when I was, I was reading this, I was wondering how this affects, we had a zoning ordinance change a few months ago about mobile home parks and, and, you know, I can, I can also defer this item if it's something that the attorneys have to work through. But I was wondering, if not, I was wondering how this would affect that zoning ordinance? Because as I understand it, this is a higher, higher level document.
Yes, and we have incorporated the, the non-conforming language that was adopted by the city council a few months back. And so that has actually been incorporated in the land use section.
Oh, did I miss that?
Yeah, that will, that was, that was on the 12th, so.
Oh.
It may have been a blur, but that was actually a recommendation.
These percentages here, I think, come right out of the Coastal Commission requirements. That's been a pretty constant reading. Has thirteen major regional, I don't think there's been a lot of changes there, Heather.
That is correct. And actually, just to let you know, LU-15 is, is.
Is that 15?
Is that policy.
Okay, very good, thanks.
And that takes the text verbatim.
Okay, anything else on five-nine? Okay, five-ten?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Jim, you have five-ten?
Um, yeah. Has nineteen? Couple things, one is, I wasn't sure if we needed item number five. There's a couple of things in there where we talk about a policy has to be consistent with other LCP policies. Isn't that kind of a given? Maybe, maybe it's not, but it seems to me they have to follow all the policies, so. So I don't know if it's, it's a redundant thing, you know, and maybe it's just a nit. The other question I had with this was, is this gonna allow us to continue to do things like repair stairways, beach stairways that, you know, go down to the actual waterline? For instance, we have some from the beach trail that go down to the actual surf?
Yes, there's actually a policy for that. Let's see. Public non-conforming facilities, it addresses that.
Number seven?
And then it's part of the, I'm sorry, has twenty-six, or H-A-Z twenty-six. And then I believe also.
I mean, I think has nineteen.
Yeah, I think there's a few.
Public access facilities, including walkways, overlooks, stairways and/or ramps, may be allowed within the shoreline bluff top setback established, blah, 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 blah.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I'm thinking, I'm not sure this is continued, considered part of the bluff. If you look at like the very nor, what I have in mind is the very northern end of the beach trail, we've got a couple of stairs that go from the beach trail down, like literally into the water. At high tide, the waves are hitting the bottom of the stairs. And I wasn't sure that that was going to be, that was covered by this kind of thing. Am I mistaken?
That's a good question, because those particular, I think by two oh four, those are down the Rivetment, actually. And we have them at Calafia as well. So I think that that would be part of like shoreline development, bluff and shoreline, shoreline development.
And maybe that's something that you want to make a note of and, and look into to make sure that it's covered?
Yes, yeah, I can absolutely do that. Yeah.
I have a question. We talk about shoreline development, bluff top development. Was any consideration given to development within a canyon itself that has a buildable lot on it?
Yes, we, I'm sorry, we, we included that as part of the minimum development necessary to avoid a takings. So we have that in as policy, we have it in the canyon section and then also in the bluff section.
I think I remember seeing it in the canyon section.
I know I have it highlighted. So it's has twenty-five?
Has twenty-five.
Has twenty-five, and then I believe we have it also in the canyon section as well, and has forty-five.
Has forty-five?
Yes.
And when it comes to has twenty-five, we say specifically residences, do we want to say any structure or? I'm guessing most coastal canyons aren't zoned for commercial, but if they do happen to get zoned, I don't know that we want them.
I think they.
Destruction of a new.
Accessory, I should say.
Or even if someone says, hey, that's a, this is my secondary residence.
Yeah, I think we can make the text more general, just.
Yeah, that is a good point, yeah. Yeah, I think probably, because what if it were some kind of structure constructed by the city?
Yeah.
I think we have a, there is a paragraph on city public stuff that's non-conforming in there, in there somewhere. I think I, that's in there, I thought so. Pump houses or, I think that it might be in there.
Want to just change it to structure instead of residence? Should I do it on both of them, the twenty-five and?
Twenty-five and forty-five.
Forty-five?
Should I continue going down?
I just, I just have one other.
Yeah, Bonnie has one on five-eleven, and did you have one?
I'm waiting for five-eleven.
Did you have one before that, Wayne?
I, I just wanted to go back to has twenty-five again. New primary residents, we talked about that. What if in fact, so, so we're going to cover it under a structure, is that?
Jim said structure, yes.
Just structure itself, okay.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, yeah. I'm just thinking of any buildable land in a canyon that would be zoned, not only R1, but just perhaps zoned multifamily also. Because there could be one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, good catch.
All right.
All right, and five-eleven?
Yeah, you've highlighted number four on has twenty, any at the end of the line. And I think you just need to add an of to that to make the sense, base sentence. Nor, no shoreline protective device will be allowed for the purpose of protecting any of the accessory structures.
Okay, five-twelve? Do you have one, Bonnie?
I do, but not of your changes.
Oh, on five-twelve, it's, this is the first review of this, so anywhere on five-twelve, anywhere on.
Chapter five.
We're on chapter five, six and seven.
Wow, okay, make up your mind.
That's what I said from the start.
All right, and has twenty-four, it would be on five-twelve. Minimum development line, let's see.
Sorry, on which one?
Well, we need, you see where it says buff, one, two, three, four, five, line six. Instead of buff, you want bluff. Shall have a new or additional bluff retention devices.
Oh, uh huh, okay.
Instead of buff.
Got it.
And then. And I think maybe I was, would like you to consider to be more consistent with the coastal act wording. The line two of the same has twenty-four, after the second line where it says requirement, instead of and, put to, "Avoid substantial alteration of the natural land form along the bluffs." And the coastal act provision, is it three oh two-five-three? I can't remember the exact number. But it says to not do the structures or the development whether, if it, if it results in substantial alteration of the natural land form. So that it means you can use development, but not to the extent that it.
More restrictive.
Yeah.
Is there a reason, John, that we chose?
Because substantial is used in the coastal act provision.
Was this a policy direction either of the commission that none of us remembers? Or of, or was it staff felt that this was a, this was an important area to be more restrictive?
Actually, I think it was just a, a policy that was incorporated as a recommendation of our, our consultants. So I think if, if the change makes us consistent with the coastal, coastal act policy, then I, I think that it would definitely be.
Is there, is there any reason not to be more restrictive?
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering about that, too, because that's with the caissons, that's a pretty important.
That's what this is about, the letter from the attorney that was on an attachment for the last time was concerned about caissons. And his interpretation was that no development was allowed. And so therefore, caissons should not be allowed. But this provision, because it says that, "Do not do this if it's going to cause substantial alteration." So you can have caissons as long as they don't result in.
I think if we leave it this way, we're actually going beyond what the Coastal Commission is doing. And we're being.
I would argue, let's stay with the Coastal, Coastal Commission's language.
I was saying, I agree with you.
Okay.
And I'm saying I disagree with you.
On page two-three is your section three oh two-five-three. And I checked it with coastal act and it's word for word, actually, out of there, provision one through five. And where it has a substantial is number two. Assure stability and structural integrity, neither create nor contribute significantly to erosion, geologic instability, or destruction of the site or surrounding area, or in any way require the construction. way require the construction of protective devices that would, such as caissons, that would substantially alter natural landforms along bluffs and cliffs.
I'm not arguing what the text of the coastal act is. What I'm saying is, is if we, we have an opportunity to be a little more, you know, wider or more restrictive than the coastal act, and the question I'm asking is, is there a reason not to do that? Is there, why not, why not say that we avoid any alteration of the natural land form as opposed to avoiding only significant alteration?
I would argue the other way. Why, why tie our hands when you have, sometimes there's certain opportunities or situations where you, you have to, you know, do take some action.
But if the purpose of, of the local coastal plan, a large purpose of it is to, is to protect our coastal resources, you know, I certainly, I, I know we've had situations where there've been caissons that were going to be placed, for example, I know we're talking about bluffs here, but in the coastal canyons. And because we didn't have the, the language to support it, some of our decision makers had to, had to support a project. So I would rather give a little more flexibility for discretion.
Yeah, but that's what I'm arguing for, is don't up the chinning bar, keep some flexibility. We have a lot of coastal bluff issues with people that need to do retention and right now. I mean, as a result of, of that large rainstorm we had, you know, five or six years ago, the thirteen inches, there's right down there below T Street, part of the bluff and the housing, and there's chunks of cement sitting down there halfway down the hill now. And the coastal commission do our bluff retention stuff, stop everything.
What this policy seems to be saying to me is that in order to avoid putting a retaining wall in, you know, those fancy cymbal with the, look like bluff type, you know, Disneyland retaining wall, or other grating on the bluff itself in order to do two-to-one slopes type stability, you can put caissons in to avoid all that.
So those, so those can be a, a measure to help have greater impact?
And then, you know, the bluff can slough away and the caissons might get exposed over time, but the idea is you can put, so substantial alteration or just alteration, I think.
So they're a protection measure for the bluff?
You want to avoid touching the bluff, that's what, allow caissons to avoid touching the bluff, bluff is what this is saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I feel like if someone needs to shore something up to protect their home, we can, we can provide a variance for that, right?
Well, that may, if you say, if you up the chinning bar on this, then we might not be allowed to.
This is going to be, the coastal commission is going to look at this and say, we don't want to give variances to what you've agreed to do. So I think we're better off saying substantial. And then we can be a little more restrictive if we choose to.
Yeah, but the wording here, I think...
Well, and my understanding from what Jim is saying, Jim, is, is that actually we would be more protective of the bluffs if we, if we added substantial, because it's, because it's, this, this is about protecting the bluff and having the minimum refacing or whatnot of, of the bluff. And so if a, if a caisson can prevent some of that action, then a caisson can be used. Is that, Jim, that's your reading, yes?
Yeah, well, the idea is you're gonna, you're gonna do caissons to avoid touching the bluff. That's what it says. I don't think you need the word substantial there. Here you're doing a caisson so you don't have to do other kinds of, you know, retaining walls or other devices on the bluff itself. You don't want to, you want to avoid touching the bluff. You don't need substantial there. You don't put caissons in only when you are doing substantial alteration to the bluff. You're putting caissons in to avoid touching the bluff at all. This is giving us the option to use caissons.
And that's, and that's kind of my argument is...
And you're saying if we didn't have the option, then they just...
Because otherwise, if we have, if we have the word substantial in there, what does the substantial mean? Are people going to be saying, well, I'm putting a wall up there because it's not a substantial change to the landform? So, you know, are we, are we leaving ourselves open to that?
I, I think that's, well, I think we're just splitting hairs here. I think the coastal commission language is the proper way to go about this, so you can protect some of the, the issues we do have currently. I mean, some coastal bluff issue right up near where you live, on the next section of the beach trail, just look up. And so I think, I think this, we should not change this word to be more restrictive.
With Jim's reading of this...
There's other policies in here that, you know, give you, you don't want to allow actual retaining walls and things on the bluff unless there's no other choice. And there are policies in here that allow that in those very special circumstances where you're going to lose property, the house is going to fall down and there's no other way to do it. This policy says, look at, you know, before you even think about that, look at doing caissons underneath the house and not touching the bluff at all and let the natural processes do what they want to do.
Well, there's not going to be any visual impact with caissons.
Right.
Right, because it'd be under, under the ground. We're not talking about caissons on the bluff itself that are exposed.
You're talking about caissons...
Yeah, and I, and I'd misread it, Jim. I, 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 I thought we, they were going to be exposed caissons, so...
No.
Yeah, so I...
See, in my mind, adding a substantial here makes it, you know, less, less preservation of the bluff, not more preservation of the bluff.
And we have the policies and tools to have those people whose homes are in danger like that to still do what they need to do to protect them. Right?
Right, it's not saying the only thing you can do is caissons, because policy thirty-one talks about exceptions and where you can do, you know, protective devices.
So we could just leave it the way it is?
Yes.
Well, I think the adding the two, the two is a good idea. The substantial, to me, kind of lessens the strength of the policy.
Okay.
To avoid alteration, okay.
With that said, I, I was in error in my understanding. Could we please look at page five eight again for a minute before we get too far ahead? Under has, has seven, new development in hazard areas. It reads that it shall only be permitted. First of all, it's a given that we're in a hazard area, it's been defined as a hazardous area. Okay, so I'm wondering, why are we develop, why are we allowing development there? It's hazardous. And, and I'd just like to take another look at that and maybe check to see with the coastal commission consultants if they're, they looked at this. And maybe we want to have something more like new development in hazard areas should not be permitted on landslides, unstable slopes, or other geologic hazard areas. I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer.
I think that one of the thoughts with that is, is that's why we have the hazards that we talked about, the twenty-five and forty-five for the minimum development necessary, or if it is a residentially zoned lot, then whoever owns that now would, the, the lot would be useless. They, they would lose all value to the property.
It says new development, but that doesn't involve emergency development, which is also included in here under other exceptions.
Well, there's, there's lots like in, just south of T Street's Boca Del Canyon. There are a number of residentially zoned lots there, and there was an old landslide that it was, I believe, in the fifties or the sixties. And some of those lots have been built on and then, and, you know, they had to, you know, do the geotechnical studies and provide the foundations necessary where, you know, people, you know, spent money and recently purchased these lots. And so now that they, they would, we would be saying that they would not have any value.
Well, we're talking about new development.
Yeah, those, those are vacant lots now.
It's up to you, I've said my piece.
You know what, Fonny, I think this almost says what you're getting at.
It almost does, but it doesn't.
It basically says you can't do new development unless you can provide the factor of safety. So what it might mean is that we do a geo, a geotechnical study would obviously be required for this kind of development to determine the factor of safety and was required. And it may require like greater setbacks from the bluff face in order to achieve that factor of safety, additional caissons being placed on the property to achieve that factor of safety. If you can't reach that factor of safety, it's not developable, according to this policy.
I understand that. Maybe if this was studied with the geotechnical studies and so forth and reclassified with the condition provided, caissons, retaining walls, et cetera, are added, so that it's no longer considered to be a hazard area, then I could go along with that. But as long as it is a hazard area, it's, it's a hazard. And we've had to rebuild slopes. The last one we did was over a quarter of a million dollars in Rancho San Clemente. And everything was done with all the safety factors and certified by the city and the geologists and soil control, erosion control, all of that, and it was problematic.
John, is this consistent with...
If you're careful here, you may avoid some litigation, and I'm just protecting you. It's up to you.
John, is this consistent with coastal commission, with the coastal act?
I'd have them check, just check it over again.
We can, I, I can go through their comments. I don't believe that they commented on this particular policy. Let me just, give me a quick second and I can confirm that for you. They did not provide any comment on that, this policy.
But perhaps you could do research to check to see if it is consistent with the coastal act and...
Yeah, I think it's good.
Just check it over and, and we're continuing, we can check, find out what it comes up with.
And if it's, and if it's not consistent with the coastal act, you know, provide us the reason why staff or the consultant included the policy. Does that meet with the pleasure of the commission? Okay.
And then back to five twelve.
Mm-hmm.
Now, catch up. Has twenty-five, to protect yourself and the property owners, I'd like to, the commission to consider changing the word, a CDP may be processed to shall be processed to allow the minimum development necessary to avoid the taking clause.
John, is that going to change your intent?
It's not changing the intent, but it makes sure that you do one with the word shall.
Yeah, so it shouldn't, there shouldn't be any problem changing it, okay?
I think it's just protect yourself, protects the city.
Okay, anything else on that page?
And then, just Fonny to stick with you on that one, I would assume that we would want to incorporate that for has forty-five as well, the...
Yeah, if the line, let's look, let's check the wording. Yeah, there we go, made a shall, thank you.
Okay, so anything else on five twelve?
No.
Five thirteen?
No.
Five fourteen? Five fifteen?
One thing, I'm sorry.
Wayne, on five sixteen?
On five fifteen, number three, drop tolerant, non-invasive vegetation may be used if feasible. What does that mean? Should it not always be feasible?
Um, I, yeah, I mean, I think that's a good question. I think this is just some template language that was used and maybe where, where applicable. Obviously feasible, like, or you provide grass instead, you know, or turf is, is probably not the best way to do it.
And I took, I took this to mean that if it's feasible to camouflage the structure with, with the plantings, maybe plantings, it's not feasible for any plantings, that would then, you can't camouflage a structure with the plantings because of the slope or for some or other reason, I don't know. I can't think of an example of where that would occur, but that's how I read it.
So not this, it's not about the selection of the plantment of, of a drop tolerant versus other, it's just, is it going to, is it possible to plant it and is it going to do the job?
Because we've had revetments out there, one in particular where they were supposed to plant and, and they never did. Well, they did and they never took care of it, so, you know. For the retention devices, it was a wall that they put up and they were supposed to maintain the plantings. If they, if they were drop tolerant, most likely those plantings would have survived.
I'll kind of find where it is.
Yeah, I...
I think if you cut out a feasible, it's fine. Because it says maybe, this is...
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Part of the control also.
Okay. All right, moving on to five sixteen. Five seventeen? You have something on seventeen?
Same as old has fifty, but I wasn't sure, never, probably, never mind.
Do you need a clarification on something? While you're looking for that, Wayne?
Yes, on five sixteen, has thirty-seven, what are we going to do about the existing shoreline revetment at this point?
I believe that was recommended to be incorporated into another policy. Give me one quick second.
I was, I was not able to find it.
Or they might have said it was repetitive. Let me, let me look here real quick.
Okay.
Now, the, from the coastal commission comments, let's see. Actually, I think what they were referring to is the revetment repairs falls back to has thirty and thirty-one. Actually, no, I'm sorry, it's, has thirty-two, discusses repair of bluff and shoreline retention devices. So I think that they, they said that it was, it was addressed in there, so it was no longer necessary.
Is there any requirement for existing retention devices to be, to be maintained? All it says here that, that it, that it's a CDP.
For, for the construction and...
No, for the, for, for, for the existing retention devices.
Repair.
All it says, to be allowed, shall require a new CDP. I'm just concerned that we have a retention device that may not be included in, in this document.
Let me jump to that, because it has thirty-two, it calls out the, the CDP application shall be included in a reassessment of the need of the device, the need of any repair or maintenance of the device and the potential for removal based on changed conditions. So any type of maintenance would require a coastal development permit.
But what do we do if in fact it needs to be repaired? Do we have any hammer with regard to that?
There's emergency provisions.
Oh, if like the city wants someone to repair the device?
Right.
Due to that, I would...
Maintain or repair, yeah.
I see, I see what you're saying. It's more that, it's not the applicant wanting to maintain it, it's us telling them you need to maintain this.
Right, right.
Um, I don't know that we have anything, I wonder if that would be something similar to the zoning ordinance and just the, the maintenance of, you know, of property, if it would fall into disrepair, that we would require them to do that, but if...
Doesn't the permit itself say construct and maintain?
I don't know about these old permits for retentions.
I don't know about old.
So that's something I think we need to take a look at.
The coastal commission's got a whole different approach than we do to these kinds of things. I know that that's one of Capistrano Shore's issues, is coastal commission's not allowing us to, they don't approve things that allow things to be maintained over time, so they, you know, if they fall down, you lose, you lose it, kind of a thing, especially on the beach. You know, with any of our, like, marine safety headquarters, when we put new, new sheet piling in to protect the marine safety headquarters, those are done on a temporary basis and they put special conditions in that say that we can't rebuild it without a permit and that kind of thing. So that's kind of a conflict that we've had with coastal commission and frankly, we'll have to check to see. I, I know, Wayne, your issue is like some of those walls and things that aren't maintained and they start looking really bad and they can actually become a hazard sometimes with the, the beach trail below, and so we want them to be...
And the ravel tracks.
Yeah, and the ravel tracks.
There's, there's some, like, that concrete down there by the Boca Del Canyon crossing that fell down, it's just laying there.
Our philosophy is kind of fundamentally different than what the coastal commission does, which is, they're trying to... Our philosophy is kind of fundamentally different than what the coastal commission does, which is, they're trying to get everything back to the natural state and, you know, we're trying to protect the aesthetics and also...
Expect our property owners.
And property owners, yeah. So we can see, we'll look into that and see what we can do, we might...
If you look at the next page, I think Jimmy, or, or, in, above has 33, there's a whole paragraph on the CDP. Forest shoreline protective shall require the protected item to be regularly monitored by an engineer or engineering geologist familiar and experienced with coastal structures and process. Monitoring reports to the city shall be required every five years from the date of coastal permitted issuance until coastal permitted expiration, which shall evaluate whether or not shoreline protective device is still required to protect, da-da-da.
Right, but...
So is there, there's a lot of wordage in there that you've inspected by this qualified engineer?
Well, yeah, that's for probably new revetments, not ones that were done, you know, 20 years ago.
Why don't we have staff look into that and we can make a recommendation and we can discuss it in our next review?
I think it's a biggie, really.
It is.
Okay.
Your concern, just so I understand it, is primarily with existing protective, shoreline protective devices and bluff protective devices and the ability to continually, or the ability for the city to require it to be maintained.
Right.
Okay.
And what about protective devices that were put in before the Coastal Act that we still may have?
I have a question on, uh, 517, if no one has anything but before that, because I think we were at 516 before we rolled.
Oh, prior to the coastal act, yes.
Um, so on, uh, has 44, um, on the language that was changed in C, John? Can you explain the, um, the reasoning, um, behind the change in language?
Yeah, so this was a comment that was, um, provided by the coastal commission staff in looking at, um, projects that are developments that predated the Coastal Act. Should those be considered in a string line? And I think that we included this language in, uh, that they could be considered in that if they are built, you know, way out into the canyon and it is not, uh, consistent with the way that that area was developed around there for the newer development, then those, then that string line and the use of that structure would not be included as part of that.
But the, the new, the new language sounds to me like it can be considered.
Well, it can under, you know, under certain circumstances, so, uh, not that they, they could or they couldn't, it would be kind of site specific.
So that's where the established opinion on site characteristics and determined after a site visit?
Yes, yes. And we do come across this a lot, you know, Jim has had a meet on site with, uh, the coastal commission staff and, you know, look at, you know, canyon edge setback, you know, canyon edge, where is that? What is appropriate string line to use? And so, a lot of this default is to the city planner, uh, which is, this is really, this is almost all completely taken from the, uh, from our zoning ordinance with the exception of the underlines here. So that is, um, um, something that is, is already done.
So, um, so when, when, I understand, go ahead.
I think maybe we can reword this, because I don't think it really gets the point across. The point is that, um, this happens more on the bluffs, there's a lot of, the, the prime example are some of those big giant condos in the pier bowl, um, right by, above second spot that go almost all the way down the bluff. Clearly, you don't want to use those in a string line, you know?
No, yeah.
Right. Well, and that's my, and that's my concern, because I'm, so I'm reading it that it would.
Yeah, and I understand, so structures developed prior to the Coastal Act that I would, I'd say something like to the fact that out of character with the, um, the development along the bluff top or the canyon, um, may not be allowed as, to be included in a string line.
Okay, yeah, because that's, because, uh, that, this seems to say the reverse, so that would be...
It does seem to say that, so it's kind of switched around.
The last paragraph of that section of 518 kind of explains how you determine...
On 5, what you're gonna hear part?
It, to me, it's...
On 518, the last paragraph of that has 44.
To me, it seems like it, that tells you whether to choose A, B, or C. But it doesn't say that you could use a string line, but not have the string line include those, um, out of character structures. It just would help you, it just gives you criteria. It's, I mean, if, uh, if everybody else is comfortable with it, I, I just would like to clarify that.
I agree with your, your point.
Yeah, in reality, in that case, we wouldn't use a string line, these are kind of, you get choices. Yeah, so we wouldn't use a string line when there's something like that.
Well, so perhaps the language maybe should say that, something that it's, maybe isn't the appropriate tool in that kind of situation or something like that. Okay, all right, Wayne?
If, if we're through with string line, I have a, another question. For a moment, if we could just visualize a developable lot within the canyon itself, okay? And so there's a canyon edge going up and then there's a, uh, an edge going down here. How far back would a development be on the canyon edge versus the canyon edge over here that goes down further into the canyon? So you have a developable lot in a canyon with a canyon edge here and a canyon edge going down here.
We, we, and I think...
I don't know, that's, that's the question I'm, I'm asking here.
Wayne, and I think that that's a really good question and I, we have, um, are gonna be posing some of these questions to the coastal commission staff, but I think a scenario like the coastal commission staff utilized in, um, the development review for Cheryl Mo's property, who just recently spoke, where that was entirely in the canyon and they established a buildable pad for her property. So it would need to be kind of a, a unique evaluation to determine, you know, appropriate setbacks and buildable area or a buildable pad, um, that would be, you know, appropriate in determining, you know, proximity to the canyon and, and potential sense of habitat. So, um, I think maybe we'll, we'll need to pose that to the coastal commission.
Because there are some that are adjacent to a bluff edge and then another canyon edge that goes farther down into the canyon.
Yeah, that's a good question, because there are several lots like that.
And we, and we really need to take a look at this before we start getting applications for, for buildable lots in canyons.
That's an important question. Okay, um, so anything, um, else on 517 or may we move on to 518? Anything on 518? Don?
Yeah, on has 46, is has, refers to has 13, is that still viable? With all your renumbering and relettering, that's the only, my only question, uh, or was it?
You know, actually, I think that that should now be has 47.
Yep. Should refer to has 47?
Yeah, I think the 14, has 14 is for the bluffs.
Yep.
And just below that, we have the...
Your technical review?
Mired, yeah, correct.
So has 13 and has, within has 46, should change to has 47?
Correct.
With, with has 46, um, the last line about redeveloped walkways? So is the intent that, that, uh, current walkways that are in the canyon, either public or private, um, uh, will be, um, ultimately removed when they're, when they can no longer be repaired? Or what's, what's the intent? For example, the, like, the, the public walkway that's down, um, in the Montalvo, um, uh, area, is, um, is that, is that allowed to be, um, maintained or what's...
That would fall within the, there's a public... Public non-conformings facilities on has 26, I believe that would fall... That would fall within it, public facilities that are existing, such as public access improvements and lifeguard facilities. So I think that that would, that would fall within there.
Okay, just want to make sure we don't lose any access. Okay, anybody else have anything on 518 or we on to 519?
Okay, I have something there. Okay, on has 49, line eight, we're talking about, um, the non-conforming structures that are not considered a major remodel as defined herein. Well, there's nothing herein that defines major remodel, but I would, I would suggest that we change as defined herein to, um, chapter seven hyphen nine fifty-one, because that's where it's defined. And it's also on five, uh, page 59 hazard thirteen. I think it would be helpful if we put the, um, where the citation is so that people aren't jumping all around to try and read everything all, or again.
Yeah, makes sense.
Is that okay?
Did you get the numbers?
It's, um, it's on that, well, I didn't put it on that sheet, but it's in this chapter under seven nine, page seven nine fifty-one. And it's under, um, that's where the definitions are in the back, it's already there. And it's also on page five nine, uh, has thirteen. And I've kind of noticed some of, this definition actually is in the back, but there's a lot of other definitions that I've come across that are within the chapters themselves, but it, they've not been, uh, transferred over to the definition in chapter seven as well. And that would be really helpful, um, for users, you know, just looking things up quickly.
Yeah, that's important.
So, um, I just, if it comes up, I'll mention it.
And you have a list of the ones that you noticed were missing?
I have some.
Okay, all right. When we get to the definitions, let's, let's revisit that. I remember during the general plan, there's a def, there'll be a definition for that, there won't be. Okay, so 519, anything? 520? 521? 522? And...
I did have something on 521, um, wanted to ask why has 12, that avoidance one had been struck, um, at the bottom of the page there?
I'm sorry, which has?
At the very bottom of the page, it says has 12, was that moved? I don't remember seeing it. See how has 12 is struck?
And why is it even there, because it's 12 and that doesn't normally follow 62?
Yeah, I was just wondering...
That's a good question.
Because I, I think avoidance is a good mitigation strategy, I think. Yeah, I don't remember seeing it, maybe I'm...
That is a curious question, Jim.
Looks like has 13 is handled by other items.
Yeah, because that, because I agree with you, Jim, it seems like an important, um...
Okay, so staff, you look at that.
Yeah.
We actually have, has one is hazards review, which is, is has 13. But it looks like maybe we lost has, maybe these were moved around and then we lost has 12 at that point.
Can you, can you research that, John, please?
Yes.
And we don't have to solve that right now.
It's not in there, uh, it may have just been a situation where I'm, I'm operating off the document because we have to refer this to the coastal commission, that has tracked changes from, uh, December. So I, it could have just been that one of those got accepted and weren't intentionally accepted. So I'll research these to make sure that if they need to be there, that they're there.
It, oh, it looks like we've got a general plan, we're referencing something in the general plan. I, I do vaguely recall we talked about risk avoidance in the general plan. So is there a reason why we wouldn't want this in the LCP if we've got it in the general plan? I'll let you research it, I don't want, yeah.
Yeah, research it, and I, I think we'd like to know, um, you know, that would be one, I think that we'd want to have you come back to us and tell us, um, if it's, what the result is and what your recommendation is as opposed to just incorporating it.
It seems, it seems like it'd be good to have, so if we don't have it, you know, what, what would be the motivation for that?
Okay, uh, 522?
Has 64, um, I'm a little, I know we talked about this a little bit in the general plan, I'm just a little, it's been a while and I'm a little unclear. Why is the natural earth and channels better than the concrete channels? Because it seems like the natural earth and channels, we'd have potential soil...
Well, there's a possibility you can, you can recharge your aqua, aquifer that way and, uh, slow off your runoff by getting it back into the ground.
And what about, um...
That's been, that's been a standard, kind of a standard...
Is that a standard, is that a standard thing?
Yeah, it's a pretty standard, uh, thing you want to try to achieve now, rather than concrete beds and increased flow and increased velocity going down.
Yeah, I, I mean, that occurred to me, but also I was thinking, you know, what about, you know, uh, you know, parking lot runoff and stuff like that? Do we want oil and things going into the ground? Of course, it goes in the ocean otherwise, but it's, but I, I just wanted to check and see if my...
The problem we do have with our two primary channels is they're, the way they're locked in and underground, the way they're really set in with, with houses right next to them, we really can't do it without undermining foundation. If you look at, you know, the houses next to Shorecliff, Gulfcliff, Porson, the way the channels go, we just redid it in the southern end down there. And the reason we couldn't go back to natural is because we, over the years in that development, the houses are so close to the channel. So now you'd be undergra, undermining their foundations by returning the, uh, the concrete bottom to, to, to dirt.
The non-permeable surfaces are preferred at this time because they, um, were feasible, because they absorb the greenhouse gases, um, lower the urban heat index. And, um, I believe that's even in here, the urban index is one of the definitions. I was reading about that as well, but they're trying to get away from the non-permeable surfaces such as the parking lots, as you mentioned, for this reason, um, for drainage, for urban runoff and, um, to lower the heat index, so.
Okay, Bart?
Yeah, just a quick comment on that 12 and 13 again. I think has 63 includes those two in it.
I think that may be what happened.
That very well may, may be.
Well, what, and why don't you analyze that when you're not, you know, on it again?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that might save him some time. Okay, so nothing on 522, 523? Okay, then, um, I would suggest since we have completed section five, we take, um, you know, seven minute break and then, um, when we reconvene, let's look at, uh, chapter six and seven. We're not actually back on. Oh, there we are. Okay. All right. Is there anything you want to, any way of opening remarks about changes here you want to call our attention to?
Yes. The majority of the comments to the policies in this section were really avoiding any repetitiveness. There were some policies that were kind of repeating more or less what they said or what was said. And so there was some consolidation that was done. Also, the addition of the human history of San Clemente. They recommended including that in section six point one point three. And that's pretty much it.
I have a comment on six one. On the paragraph down at the bottom. The yellow highlight, the first yellow, the commercial visitor surveying areas that contribute to San Clemente's, and then in parentheses, history slash image question mark.
Yeah. I think that's maybe something.
How about history and image? I think I put them both in, but. I throw that type of easy wordage out to the commission group.
I would, I think probably image or historic image. Because I guess you're always making history and you're always contributing to history. But I think that might be misconstrued, so. Yeah. Or is it circular? Takes me back, this takes me back to the general plan. All the wordsmithing. Why don't we say character?
Staff's asking a question mark and I just.
No, you're right. I wasn't criticizing you for it, but just trying to find the right word.
I just suggest history and image. I mean, it's using both.
Sounds great to me.
Let's go with history and image to.
I'm sorry, can I just have clarification? History and image instead of.
History slash image with a question mark. It looked like somebody was evaluating it and just didn't complete the evaluation.
Sorry, I thought I said six one first yellow. I apologize, Eileen.
We've got it.
She couldn't hear you over the package rattling. Okay, anything on six two?
I have an issue with human history.
Yes. Do you want it just to be Wayne's history?
We do, particularly with you.
There, maybe there, maybe prehistory for Wayne.
All right, six three? Six four?
Oh, sorry, six three? The, where is it? Goal six, six dash one. I just, I guess, at the risk of doing some wordsmithing, which we've learned to try to avoid when we're doing the general plan. But when I read this, read this goal, I'm not sure how really aspirational or attainable it is. It's to be, our goal is to be a community that places a high priority on something. It just seemed like we could be maybe more concise and accurate by saying that our goal is to, is to preserve our scenic and cultural resources, you know, for enjoyment of residents and visitors or something like that. I'm not, I'm not trying to write it. But my point is this kind of says that our priority is to place a high priority. Our goal is place a high priority rather than our goal to be preservation, you know, things like that. So.
I think everybody's finding the way it is.
You know. I think actually, it's, I think high priority. I understand what you're saying because you're not saying you're exercising, you know, that priority. But I think, I think it's important that it's, that we don't just preserve it, that it's, that we're saying that that's a high priority perhaps over some other priorities.
Okay.
This may have been something that came out of the general plan. It's been a while since I added, added the goals in. But I think that this was taken, it could be a combination of a couple of goals, but.
I mean, there might be a different way to word it where it sounds like we would actually act on that priority. Maybe just look at that. But I think it's, I think, I think we all would agree we want to, we want it to be an important, we want it to be a high priority, but we want it to be acted upon. Does that satisfy your concern, Jim?
Yeah, I, I guess maybe it's just more of something on my part. I kind of felt like if it weren't a priority, we wouldn't have any LCP. But I'm, I'm, nothing at all.
Okay. All right, six four?
Yeah, in Viz four, street design. We're talking about here the layout of new streets. And I don't know how many new streets we're going to have. Do we want to talk about any, anytime we do a street improvements or redesign our streets? This kind of says just brand new streets. At least that's how I read it.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a good point. Because why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we enhance public view corridors?
We're changing the sidewalks or doing traffic calming or whatever, so.
So could we expand that?
To all streets or just?
Well, to all, you know, just to take out new.
Yeah, basically.
In the design and layout of streets. Okay, six five? Nothing? Anything on the view corridor maps?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Wayne, you're first.
On six point seven, where it shows the Pier Bowl public view corridors, specifically Linda Lane, is the public view corridor as outlined, is it from landform to landform? Or is it from? Because when you go, when you go down that street right now, the view of the ocean is degraded because the city went in some time ago and planted on either side a lot of trees. And therefore, the view went from here to here. So I wanted to find out if in fact the view is the original view or the current view with the trees that were planted.
I think we can look into that.
Okay. It's an important point because we need to, we need to cut these trees down.
I don't think we're going to get into that particular topic with this. What the corridor does is it shows that there is that, trees there or not, it's that corridor. And then when you're evaluating things within the corridor, you look at, you look at the ocean, you look at the trees, you look at the buildings, you look at everything within it to evaluate whatever kind of change you're going to do. So we should be looking at when we plant new trees, the design of the corridor rather than just planting trees.
Actually, on the preceding page, six five, item D, the highlighted there, drives you to maintain, prune. Good practices achieved as our goal without interrupting significant public views or on the ocean. So I think.
I think that's from the general plan.
There's a policy there that says, Wayne, you could probably say that we should go down there and trim the trees back to the original view.
I hope we can.
And then we also. We also have your, the policy recommended to protect the public vistas. So that may kind of.
Well, the question I had with regard to these.
Is how they're defined.
Delination of the lines. What does that mean here in six dash seven?
Are these from the general plan? I mean, is this what's said in our general plan right now?
Yeah.
So it's.
Yeah, they are.
But didn't you say, Jim, last time we discussed this, that somewhere we have a map that's much more precise than this little one inch?
Well, there's, for here, there's a, for Linda Lane specifically, there's a map in the Pier Bowl specific plan that shows. It basically is landform to landform. The whole corridor includes the whole view within that canyon. Just like in the Pier Bowl, when you come down Del Mar or turns into Victoria, you're looking down that whole thing. So just because there's some trees going in it doesn't mean that the view corridor is not there anymore. But that's, anything within that view corridor needs to be assessed whenever you're doing a project within there and evaluated. Trees sometimes add value, sometimes trees take away value depending on how they're placed.
Okay.
Like quick growing pine trees in Trafalgar Canyon.
My turn?
Yes, Bonnie.
Okay. Six six, six seven, and six ten, all the figures. The resolution is a little bit better than a lot of the other map images. But the font is still too small. And a lot of people will be looking at this stuff on their smartphones or their little tablets and things like this. There are room, there is room on the page to enlarge the legends. So that you can see them without a microscope and the names of the streets and things like that. And I know that you will improve the resolution later. But if you could just enlarge the font a little bit on all of the figures throughout the whole.
I think there was.
LUP.
I think there were some issues in our last discussion where there were some things that were kind of, that were small and they're kind of hard to read.
It would be so helpful for people that are accessing this from their devices. And also, and this is an eight by ten, and, you know, it's hard to make things out. Not so much here with the micro print because it has better resolution. But for a lot of people that it would be problematic. So you might as well address it now in the early stages rather than fix it later if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, six eight? Jim, I see your hand reaching.
Six nine.
Okay. Six nine.
Yeah, now we're going to get into it. We're on six nine, right?
Yes.
All right. As Dawn and I were talking a little bit on the break, we went through ad nauseam on defining what a public view corridor is versus a scenic view corridor. And now we appear to be adding new vocabulary in here. And I thought we were pretty clear. We got pretty clear on a good distinction between those two things. I'm actually not so concerned on what exact verbiage we use, but we should be consistent. And if we have to change it to conform to the coastal.
We didn't do the.
The coastal commission, we can do that in the general plan. But in any case, I think we need to be, you know, consistent or have a mapping or make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. We talk about a view corridor or scenic view corridor, you know, whatever it might be. Or scenic roadway corridor.
You can pretty much put public in front of all of those if that helps. Whenever you're talking coastal commission. They're looking, they're talking about the public view corridor, the public scenic corridor, everything, and so.
I think the general plan defines it as a scenic view corridor and a public view corridor. Those two things.
Unfortunately, I don't see public, I have public view corridor in the acronym.
I'm sure there was a definition.
It should be in the definitions.
I got the definition pages for scenic corridor and major scenic corridor, which is says scenic corridor major and minor scenic corridor. And then you go there, there isn't anything there.
We certainly in definition for.
In our general plan, I made copies of it after all the work we did on it.
I like a public view corridor because that's the view of the beach or the view from the pier. That's got to be in the general plan somewhere. I didn't go back and check because I was so sure that we had those. But if we don't have both of those, we need them in the general plan. We should put them in our menu. But I wanted that, I wanted, I wanted that to be consistent here with our LCP. I don't know if our vocabulary in this area needs to be driven by the coastal commission or not. If it does, then it does, and we should change the general plan. But if not, then probably in the LCP, we should use the same language that we use in the general plan.
I would submit, I would agree wholeheartedly with that because we need to make sure that public view corridors, scenic, all that, in public with everything, it's all consistent and it's all, has to be there. And I literally went back to my copy of the general plan and looked at the definitions there. As hard as we worked. As hard as we worked, I don't know, I think in eleventh hour, they didn't make it in.
We must have spent three hours.
I, I mean, they're not.
Talking about, about.
I brought the copies of the page.
I'm very clear what they are in my mind.
I know, well, go, go back to your general plan, on page eighteen and thirteen, about scenic quarters and, and manner, and they just refer to each other back and forth, and never define anything, so. It's not there, we just, it didn't make it in.
Jim, is that something that you could follow up on, separate from this exercise?
It's an important definition.
But just making sure that the general plan definitions get in. But then, to, to Jim's, Commissioner Ruland's point, can we make sure that we have consistency? And I think he's right, the, the, we have to, if, if the Coastal Commission's terms are different than ours, then we need to somehow make ours consistent. Yeah.
But anyway, we need to get them all in there, all together, all laid flat, and compared, and into the general plan also. So I agree with Mr. Ruland. I also have a comment on VIS twenty.
Uh-huh.
Because I think B and D are duplicative, the same, El Camino Real Pacific Coast Highway, and then El Camino Real, B and D, as it lays out on VIS twenty, A, B, C, D. Can we eliminate one of them? Neither did I.
What's it?
Fryley, and that's page six-dash-nine.
But it's a roadway corridor.
Is that what we're calling a scenic view corridor?
I don't know.
A scenic roadway corridor?
No, that's different.
So it's a third animal?
Well, it, it, it refers to mobility one-dash-two-six of our general plan. We worked so hard on that in the general plan, and we still haven't gotten it right.
And we worked hard on it for a rea, I mean, we've discovered there was true confusion about, about those things, and they meant different things, and, you know, part of it was just kind of, kind of coming to bits with that, so I don't want to lose that.
Kylie was there, she remembers.
That would be something, John, that it would be very helpful if, in your, in your staff report, for the next time we review this, if you indicate to us what you found, and then what you're recommending, so, you know, we can have a chance to kind of analyze that, and look at it, you know, we can all look it up in context.
Yes, definitely. So ultimately, the goal is to incorporate what we, you know, worked so hard on in the general plan, and as far as definitions of the view corridors into the LUP, unless the Coastal Commission is dictating some other kind of terminology. And in that case.
We have to back engineer.
We would want to come back and amend the general plan to be consistent with whatever we're going to be adopting in the LUP.
And we all, and one way or another, apparently, we need to go back and look at the general plan, and check on the definitions, because apparently, we, we have not included everything that we needed to, according to.
Not there.
There are no definitions for the corridors, and?
There's only scenic corridor, and major scenic corridor, which says, see scenic corridor major, minor scenic corridor, see scenic, scenic, scenic corridor minor, and then you go there, and there isn't any.
Okay.
And then you go to scenic corridor, there's a long paragraph that, major and minor shall correspond to the master landscape plan for scenic corridors definitions of major urban slash recreation corridor, and minor urban recreation corridor respectively.
Okay, well.
I'll give them to you.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks.
Okay. Did you have something, Bonnie?
When we get to six-eleven.
Okay. All right, anything on six-ten? What would be the map of the roadway corridors? Okay, on six-eleven, Bonnie, you're on.
Okay. I also have the coastal act here, if anybody wants to look up definitions. I also have the coastal act here, if anybody wants to look up definitions of corridors and so forth. Okay. I would respectfully request that the commission consider adding, adding a couple more provisions, of adding VIS twenty-eight fences. Now, we have signs here, we've had some interesting encounters regarding signs with the city, and I really think we need to consider fences, too. And what I would suggest would be similar to RES sixty-nine-D, which is on page four hyphen four-one. And it should be visually here, because it's affects the visual quality so much in our view corridors, scenic highways, view cones, et cetera. And suggest some language, something like, incorporate visually open fences to preserve views, ensure continuous public access, and to buffer habitat areas, open space linkages, or wildlife corridors from development as appropriate. And most of the wording is from page four-four-one, Resolution sixty-nine-D.
Of the coastal, of the current coastal.
Of this, no, of our.
Okay, I'm trying to find it, say that again.
Page four-four-one of our LUP, and it's Resolution sixty-nine, provision D.
Oh, there we go.
Here.
Okay, now, but that's specific to natural areas, so.
That is, so you take out the natural area thing, which I did, and then.
Sixty-seven. I'm sorry, it's sixty-nine.
And then for, for visual, just more in general terms.
So you're talking about anywhere in the coastal zone?
No, let's read it again. Fences, incorporate visually open fences to preserve views, ensure continuous public access, and to buffer habitat areas, open space, space linkages, or wildlife corridors from development as appropriate. Yes, this would be in the coastal zone, that's what the LUP is all about, is the coastal zone.
I, I understand that, thank you for that. But I mean, but are, are you saying the entire coastal zone, or you, are you saying the, the last part of your sentence was, are adjacent to open space corridors, or, so was it a?
I would think, the policy should be a little bit more general, and then the IP would be a little more definitive, and then you would say, in established view corridors, in the cities, you know, established scenic highway areas, the, the definitions that you're having, John, look up to check on, to see what they mean. The IP would be the operational procedure for in implementing the general policy, which is what this is. So if you leave it open like this, it allows you to include in your IP. The idea is, if you have, if you're driving down the highway, and you see, you know, you're enjoying views, and have established views, different areas, then you want to incorporate visually open fences when possible, to preserve those views. Example of that would be in Dana Point, where they've done the headlands, and the, all the reserve area, and around the strands, development of the homes. They use fencing, that's a rod iron fencing, and it's, you see in between each of the rods, and so it, there's protection, and it gives the, you know, it, it serves as a barrier between the residences and the other areas, so that they have the protection that they want, security that they want, but you can still see the view over the bluff edge to the ocean that you used to have.
Would, what about, like, someone putting up a fence in their backyard? You know, they're just, they're putting up a fence between them and their neighbors or something, would they then have to have a visually open fence? They couldn't just have a?
Well, you can put where feasible, so you can add that, too, and then you would put that into your IP.
I think, I think we've had this, we've used this concept clearly in the coastal trail.
Right.
One of the big issues, one of the big discussion points and debates with the railroad was, they wanted to put in this wire mesh fencing to block views, and no one wanted it. So we did the very, you know, open fence that you can see right through, you hardly even notice it, very effective. So in a, a highly public view area, I can see using these fences, I think I would be concerned of requiring it everywhere in the coastal zone. A lot of times you're having fences for privacy.
I could support this, it was just in the public view areas.
But if we connected to the view corridors, and, you know, incorporate visual fences, I think that we could add a policy like this, and it would be something that would be consistent with the, the other policies that we already have.
I, I could support that, as long as it's tied to the public view corridor, rather than.
Yeah, the public view of the.
Yeah. You know, some people, their own property, I think that they have some other fencing, the rights to other fencing choices.
Public view corridors, vistas, some of the other things that have already been mentioned.
I'm certainly much more comfortable with it if it's only in the public view corridor, but, I don't know, I, I'm just trying to think, like, say, in the Del Mar area, as you get, as you go down towards the pier, are, are there, I'm trying to visualize, are there properties there that have fences, or, you know, and that would seem appropriate, that block some of the view, or could be designated as blocking some of the view?
Yeah, I, I drive down there several times today, I, I don't recollect any.
I wonder what about, what about some of the others? I'm just trying to, you know.
Sure, that's good.
I'm just trying to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences. So if we're looking at, say. Like the.
Tough example, the wall around the pool at the Eli Hansen Recreation Facility. You look at it from, I mean, they wouldn't be able to do that, have a solid wall, if we implemented this.
Which, when we reviewed the Beach Club, we talked about.
We did talk about it.
But, but, so that's an interesting example. The wall is not.
Let's. I understand, so we'll, we'll write it in a way that it, you know, says that the goal is, or, you know, not make it an absolute. The idea would be, you know, to help enhance public view quarters, consider open, open fences in order to better preserve and maintain public views, so it doesn't say that you have to do it in every instance.
Where feasible, you know, stick one of those in.
I think, I, yeah, feasibility, I think is maybe not the appropriate test here, because I think that would just mean if you could build it. But I, I think if, if we make it something that, you know, we would like to see, but it's not something that's required, because I, I, I think we'd have to really go study those areas to make sure that we weren't, you know, taking away some of the privacy rights of people, you know, along like Linda Lane, or, you know, some of those areas.
And if you look at policy thirteen, VIS thirteen, it says, review and require changes to development proposals as needed to minimize obstructions of designated significant public views. It's basically saying the same thing.
Significant public views.
Fences could be a part of that review, so we kind of have it covered, but if you want to be more specific, and encourage the, you know, the open type fence, like the coastal trail, in certain instances, then you can, you know, make a more specific policy for that.
I'm, I'm fine if we're encouraging, but I don't want to require it without further study.
I agree with that.
Okay.
And then I, so.
I'm sorry, just a quick comment to go back to the, the definitions on the general plan. The, we do have both definitions on the general plan, it's not under view corridor, it's under public view corridor, so it's under P instead of the. I just, yeah, I just did a search, so.
Good.
So we, so at least we do have the two definitions in the.
That's perfect.
General plan, but officially, it's public view corridor.
Okay.
Another one.
Uh-huh.
Respectfully request, if we could please add another visual provision, number twenty-nine, storage on undeveloped lots, and suggest some language to the effect of vehicles, equipment, supplies, materials, bins, or construction debris may not be stored on undeveloped lots along view corridors, public view corridors, vistas, or scenic highways.
Don't we have that required already, is you can't store something on vacant lots?
No, because they do it.
Well, there's, there's a zoning somewhere.
I think the city does that on its own property, in a view corridor, next to the U-Haul.
That's right, it does, yeah.
There's some places up on Pacific Heights I've seen.
There's some places on Coast Highway, parking lots.
You know, we have a number of staging areas in town that, you know, are absolutely required in order to do development. If you don't do the staging areas and the vacant lots, then you're going to impact somewhere else. It's going to have larger impacts to the community, so I'd hate to, to limit our flexibility on what we're doing, so.
Well, when there's other places.
My two cents, you guys can require, or suggest whatever you want, but I think that could be problematic.
Is the whole purpose of this LUP to control how we issue permits? That doesn't issue a permit. There's no way to enforce that through, through this.
This is not all about issuing permits.
I mean, that would be a city ordinance, or whatever. I don't think it would belong in here for vacant lots that have no development or anything.
So, or parking lots?
That's an ordinance.
Code enforcement.
That's an ordinance.
You know, my feeling is, if there are other places available, let's say there are a lot of storage materials, items, vehicles, backhoes, dump trucks, and things that we've seen on the public, the established public view corridor on Coast Highway now, on the, at the ECR lot, that's got the green mesh around it, and it's been up for months, and months, and months. And the products that are being stored in there, and the debris is for the Los Molinos subterranean irrigation systems that have been going on, and that there's plenty of room up by the sewage treatment plant, that is even closer to the site that's being worked on, and that's feasible, that there should be an effort to store all of these items there, rather than block the ocean view from the Pacific Bike Trail, and the protective view corridor, that we're spending millions of dollars on right now to build a roadway to Dana Point. This, that, but that's just me.
Bart?
I have to say, the intent is good, but I'm not sure that's a, in the coastal policy. I think that's general plan and, and ordinances, because these are usually temporary uses, rather than permanent uses.
Los Molinos underground, electrical undergrounding, supposed to be, you know, wrapping up here, what, in August or something, so it's a temporary thing.
Seems like a long time to me. I, I, I would agree with Bart. I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable making that, making that addition.
I agree.
Anybody?
I, I think the intent is good. I, how can we, how can we work it out? Because I think Bonnie has a good point there. She really does. So somehow, we need, can, should, we should think about that and try to work that out.
We need to walk the walk, instead of just talk the talk.
Well, it, it's not about not, not walking the walk, it's, I think, if you're doing development near the coast, and you need to stage something for a temporary period of time, where are you going to put it? You're going to put it five miles inland, you know, the things that you're staging? So, like with Bart, I, it's not that, there's not perhaps maybe more that we could do on the issue, but if there's a lot of development going on, and they, there's a lot of equipment that they, they need to be placed temporarily, you know, a, a temporary permit may be appropriate.
Yeah, like, when it comes time to do sand replenishment, you know, some of the briefings we've had in Coastal Advisory Committee, I mean, you move a lot of heavy equipment around when the dredges start delivering sand to the beach, but you're not allowed to park, store, the bulldozer, backhoe on the beach overnight. That's even laid out in these policies we've, we've reviewed right here now. So where are they going to put all that equipment overnight? And when the dredge goes down south, they get, you know, there are 10,000 tons of sand to bring back up, if, and, so there's a perfect example where this policy would kind of mitigate against that, you know.
When we do the El Camino Real.
Yeah. Or when we do the bike path in El Camino Real, the nine-ten-Samaul, it's imminent when we get a coastal permit. So where do we store all this stuff on a temporary basis? And I, you know, I, I think, you know, we, you've got a good point, but we got a what-if it, I mean, design this on the dais, maybe some staff ought to go back and, and look at, and see where is the appropriate place for it. I think she's got a good point, but then again, we got to make sure the language is there, that the what-ifs don't tie our hands when we really need to do it for a public benefit.
I think it's a little bit similar to the fence policy, I'm worried about the unintended consequences, because it wouldn't just apply, I know the one lot we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
But, you know, there's other places and other staging areas within the whole coastal zone, and you're right, you know, there's, right now, that site's used because it's the least impactful, even though it does view, impact some of the view corridor for a temporary amount of time, it doesn't, it doesn't ultimately obstruct the view corridor, and it's less impactful than taking up parking spaces that people use for the beach and other events down there. So just eliminating it altogether is probably not the best solution. I mean, ultimately, that lot will be, something will be done with it, and it'll stop being used as a staging area. used as a staging area, and it'll be used for another purpose. But until that time, it's kind of our best option down there when we have to deal with, you know, sewer pump stations that break and other things that happen that, you know, are unavoidable. And there's no better location to do it. So maybe we can, let's, let's try and think about, I understand the intent, which is also on the other, on the flip side of that, we don't want to continue using that as a staging area forever and ever and have an ugly thing in the public view corridor.
Well, my understanding was that supplies are being stored for the Los Molinos construction right now, not for the beach. And there is areas closer to Los Molinos, at the city Sewer Yard and so forth, where these things could be stored.
Well, why don't we, staff, let staff research that and make a recommendation that, you know, could work towards the intent without being too restrictive to cause a problem for the city in those types of projects. Okay, that brings us to six twelve.
Yeah. Just, I don't think this was the intent of it. I just want to make sure that we not, we don't let kind of some verbiage slip through that might be an issue. And maybe I'm being overly sensitive, but CUL six, adaptive reuse. We talked about encouraging adaptive reuse of historic resources, which certainly we want to do, but we want to do it when the historic resources can't be restored and kept in their, for their original purpose. Adaptive reuse is sort of like what we do when we can't do what we really prefer. So it's not like I want this to go away, but either, you know, part of this policy or perhaps another policy right next to it maybe should be talking about, you know, the more, the more full, our goal is the more full historic preservation.
Does it be, maybe the words were appropriate or when needed or something?
When needed.
I think it actually says that.
It says encourage.
It says encourage, and then it says, like you say.
And prevent architecturally inappropriate changes. I think it covers that.
All right. I didn't want to apply that, imply that, you know, we should be like, you know, well, you know, we're using this house as a house, but, you know, hey, we can do it, we can turn it into a restaurant and do adaptive reuse. Well, we don't necessarily have to do that. I didn't want to sort of open the door that, but I may, like I said, I may be a little, little sensitive on this.
When the, something like when the original use is not feasible, we encourage adaptive reuse.
This is a quote out of our general plan, so what you're saying is we got to change the general plan?
I think Wayne's completely right, to encourage adaptive reuse of historic resources, to preserve them and prevent them from inappropriate changes. I think it's all covered in there. All right.
It's in our general plan, so we don't want to mess with it anyway.
Okay, six thirteen. Six fourteen. All right, congratulations. We are now moving to a new chapter. All right, chapter seven, definitions. And there were several definitions we talked about, I know, in the, in the last session. And you've incorporated some of those updates, yes?
Yes, I've been, I've incorporated some updates to this based on Coastal Commission staff comments, additional definitions from either the Coastal Act or other recently certified LUPs. So we really try to utilize, you know, false, or definitions that have already been approved and vetted and not try to recreate anything.
Seven one.
All right. Do you have anything on page one, Bonnie?
Yeah, I do. Seven one and seven two, is number five, the appealable coastal development permit, is that one that you updated with the Coastal Commission?
Yeah, I think that there, I saw your comment from earlier today, and I think that there is, it is repetitive, the number three.
No, it's not that it's repetitive, it's not consistent with. And so if you turn to page on one five, and it's called, the heading would be one point, two point three, coastal development permit authority. And we need to compare these two and choose which one is the most appropriate, but just make them both consistent. And so, in other words, in, on seven one, it has the provisions two through four. And these are not meshing, they are not in sync with the provisions, provision two through four on page one five. They are consistent on number four.
Okay, so then, let's.
And one.
We need to reconcile the two.
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Whichever you, you know, you, the staff feel is, is the most appropriate, but make the most, most the same, so that you don't run in, you don't stomp on your foot later on.
Okay, Jim?
On that same one, number five, it looked like item five, under five, is redundant with subitem three. So in other words, we can probably remove subitem five.
Redundant to where?
Oh, yeah.
It's a major pub, public work?
It's the first sentence of number three.
Number three. Number five is, is the first sentence of number three.
And so, and, and five is the same in the definition as it is on one, one five.
So if you can clean.
So they're both the same. If you want to omit five then, or?
Well, whatever we do.
I'll review this with consistency with the Coastal Act definition, just to ensure that we're exactly the same.
Was the yellow added by Coastal Commission?
They recommend, they asked that we include these, so it just may have been that I should have eliminated some, some things that weren't eliminated on there. But I'll, I'll make sure this is consistent with the Coastal Act.
Okay. And then on the same hand, I, we don't have to go over them all, but I'd recommend adding some more definitions and include acronyms. For example, what is RWQB?
Regional Water Quality Board.
Regional Water Quality Board? Okay, well, it's easy to use acronyms like this because you know what they are. But regular people coming in here, they, they don't know. And so the first time it's used in the text, you know, you should write out the, what it is, each word, and then in parentheses, put the acronym. And then, they should probably be in the definitions as well. And there's many of them.
I was going to say, I know you've got a list here.
I've got a list here.
Why don't you just offer it to staff to incorporate as, as required?
And then I would just, wherever in, within a chapter, you have a definition for something, for instance, major remodel, that was the one we did today, make sure you put it in the definitions in chapter eleven, seven also. So it's easy for normal people to find something.
To find normal people.
Yes, I was going to, I was going to say, what about the abnormal?
I think we have to go back to human history to do that.
Okay. So, does anybody else, I'm assuming there's, is there others who, so Bonnie has a list of things that have been missed. Does anybody else have anything on page seven one or seven two? All right, let's move on to seven three. Seven four?
Actually, well, seven three and also down at seven four. I'm just, it looks like we've got bluff and coastal bluff, and they, they do refer to each other, at least coastal bluff refers to bluff, but not vice versa. But they're somewhat different, and it seems like the way we define bluff, it is a coastal bluff. So it seems like we should probably just have one definition for them.
Well, there are two different bluffs.
Yeah.
There's a coastal bluff, and then there's a bluff within the canyon itself.
This says a bluff is around a cliff face overlooking a plain or body of water. So I was, hmm.
Stick that in the bar.
Maybe we should have ones that says canyon bluff instead, in addition to coastal bluff.
We have coastal bluff, canyon face, cliff face.
Perhaps staff can.
Or maybe there's just a general term for a bluff, and it doesn't matter if it's coastal or canyon, but.
Well, there's a big difference.
Well, yeah, that's, we.
They own, they own the canyons, the first ridge line, whatever, and so that, that could be a bluff in the interior.
So maybe the trick is, is just to remove coastal bluff from that one and just call it a bluff.
No, there's a difference between a, and they approach coastal bluff differently.
That word may be used in the text of the Coastal Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It just, that's fine. I understand. We got all these different things spinning around, but maybe a little, a little clarity in referencing each other or something, because it can be a little.
If you can look at that, John.
Yeah. Are you, are we going to be looking at canyon bluff?
I think it would be helpful.
The direction that I understand is adding a definition for canyon bluff?
Yes, yes.
Adding a definition for canyon bluff, and just making sure that, that these definitions aren't so circular that they don't provide, you know, clear, a clear understanding of what they define.
We'll look at it, but we also have to look at the context of all the regulations and how the terminology is in there, to make sure it's consistent. We had canyon bluff, and there's no use of the term anywhere in the document. That doesn't do us any good. So we'll, we'll evaluate it and come back.
Sounds fair. Okay, seven five. Seven six. Seven seven. Seven eight.
I, I just have one thing to go back to this, because it does say here canyon edge.
Mm-hmm.
Canyon edge. So I'm still back on here, as opposed to coastal bluff. Is there something for canyon edge?
There, well, they have edge, and then edges means the upper termination of a bluff canyon or cliff.
Put it in definitions.
And then it goes on at length.
Well, maybe the original thing.
John, could you add that to definitions?
Like it's where a coastal bluff curves landward to become a canyon bluff. So, I mean, it, I mean, it seems like there's, there's.
Don't you get it?
There's quite a bit of description about what, when it's a canyon bluff, when it's a coastal bluff. And, I mean, it's a.
The canyon or bluff face may be a simple plan, planar or curved surface, or it may be steep-like in section. Refer to seven, seven one.
I didn't bring it up to try to add confusion, obviously. Maybe it's just a matter of saying, when we say bluff, we mean any of those. What's that?
You always, you always, you always cloud it up.
No, I, we'll look at the thing, and it probably needs to, this is carried over from last LUP, so we'll reevaluate it.
All right.
It certainly could be clearer. I don't know if we need two definitions or if we could do in just one, so we'll look at it.
Maybe a bluff is just any kind of bluff. I don't know, but, you know.
Maybe a bluff has something to do with poker. All right, so seven eight.
Well, wait a minute, it already says that here. I'm sorry, on thirty, on number thirty-six, where a coastal bluff curves landward to become.
I just read, I read that.
You just read it about two minutes. Well, I'm, I'm still, I'm still behind here.
Just because you breathe it through.
Poor man.
All right.
He needs help.
So, so now that Wayne's caught up, we're on seven eight. Seven nine. Seven ten. Seven eleven. Sorry.
Seven ten, we got a major public works project, but we also refer minor in this text. We need a minor public works project?
Seven thirteen.
Yeah, and here we get to scenic corridors and roadways. This seems to incorporate the definition of both, what we have as a public, as a, as a scenic corridor and a public view corridor together. So I think it's just something that's going to have to be straightened out a little bit between this and, and the general plan, kind of falls into that, well, we've already talked about.
I agree.
Okay, seven fourteen. Eighty-seven. Oh, I'm sorry, seven fifteen. I wasn't calling out eighty-seven, I was just wandering. Seven sixteen. Okay, and then what about the attachments, anything? All right. Okay, all right, it is quarter to nine. Why don't we go back to the beginning? And let's begin, anybody who had questions about how changes were applied, or in Bonnie's case, since she didn't have an opportunity to make comments on the first time around.
I'll breeze through these.
Okay, and then we'll just, we'll keep an eye on the, on the clock and on our acuity.
Okay.
And see how we go.
Especially our acuity.
Yes.
All right.
We've already determined you're not acute at all.
Okay, so then on page one three, it's the same as with a lot of the other ones. Please enlarge the text and the legend, figure one point one, enlarge it on the face of the thing, and to make it readable without a magnifying glass. And then on page one four, one point two point two, goals and objectives. I think we should consider replacing the text that says, "Which conforms to the intent of the Coastal Act with which conforms to the Coastal Act," because they're going to want us to conform to the Coastal Act. So that's just my suggestion.
John, your selection of that language, was that intentional, that, because there's some things where we, we might have our own, we might be more stringent on something.
Which conforms to the Coastal Act.
Is there a reason so that it, so that it gives us leeway to be more stringent or to create policies that are perhaps weren't covered by the Coastal Act, but are in the spirit of the Coastal Act? Is that, is that why we have that language, or?
I think so. I mean, I can't recall initially where this language came from. I think it was initially from the nineteen ninety-five original LUP. But I think that as part of our review, one of the things is we need to be at least as restrictive as the Coastal Act. I don't think that the Coastal Commission is going to let us get away with anything that's less restrictive.
Better fix it now.
But whether it's intent or, you know, what Bonnie's recommending, I don't, I don't know that that, I think it is implied if you just say what Bonnie is saying, so it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put it in.
All right.
Okay. And then we already talked about the appealable. John's going to work on that one. And that's one five, and the development, coastal development permit authority. Okay. And so we'll skip down to figure two, one A, two one B, two one C, two one D, two one E, two one F. And enlarge the text, please, on all of those. And put page numbers.
That's kind of a global.
Yeah, I do think with all, with all the text and all the maps we talked about in the previous meeting, and I actually brought it up early, you know, I think, I think staff understands that the maps have to be improved in that way.
Put the headers on each page, and we all agree with that.
But this, these need page numbers, too. These diagram, these images don't have no page number. So those need to be added. And then, and then we talked about the headers, putting the headers on, on page two ten through two sixteen. And so, on to two twenty-three, another figure.
Can we go back to two eleven, to a little bit? The wordage changed, I think, in mixed use three oh, and some of the other things, is that in the right-hand column?
Oh.
The allowable uses for mixed use three, I don't know, this is all in flux right now, but vertical, vertical or horizontal mixed commercial, which from the previous.
What page you looking at?
Two eleven versus two twelve, mixed use three is, the allowable uses stuff changed quite a bit, I think.
I was comparing the last version to this one.
I don't recall changing any of the text.
Well, I'm just looking at the preceding, the previous document I had, I pulled the pages out of it, and they kind of read differently. It applies to downtown core, vertical mix, all that stuff kind of disappeared.
On page eleven, I have the regional serving.
Well, I'm looking at page two twelve in the current book we have tonight, which is mixed use three zero, allowable use. And then I get over to the second page, or on the old document, three point oh, had the words like, applies to downtown core, vertical or horizontal mix of neighborhood serving, community serving, attached moldy, all that verbiage, allowable use disappeared. This is the, the book I had from a month ago, and then the change pages I put in, which were before us tonight. put in, which were before us tonight, it's all gone. Mixed-use three-point-oh. I know this whole table is kind of in flux.
So...
And then, see, the verbiage tonight, vertical mixed-use, goes down here and applies and is permitted on, and then goes blank. But in the old book, it went right on to the second-floor hire, applies to downtown core, and so over here, this is second-floor hire, and then it stopped.
Why don't you just give that to John?
All this is kind of like missing.
Check why it happened.
The circle in the red.
There's it, all of this.
Oh, here, twelve.
Yeah, I know, the pages all shifted around a little bit.
It's just something got, this text got lost.
Oh.
So, John has it, so he's gonna check if it got lost on purpose or not. Okay, anything else in the...
The whole section's really in flux anyway, but I just point that out.
No, that's good, because it's easy to lose things. Anything else in the tables?
No.
Okay. I have, I have something on two-twenty. Do you have something before that, Bonnie?
Two-ten through two-sixteen, the, these are enlarged maps of the coastal zone areas. So you can actually see things on here pretty well, from the new deck, and it has the coastal zone boundary on here. But what I was thinking would be very helpful to developers, to planners, to commissioners. To add the line on here of the appealable area boundary line. That would, did you hear what I said, John?
I'm sorry, no, I did not. What page were you talking about?
If we're looking at the diagrams, the figures from...
That won't come until you do the IP, and they have, Coastal Commission has to give us that line. So we don't have the line yet.
Two-one A to two-one G, with what my suggestion was, was that besides, all of these are enlarged sections of the coastal zone bound, and it's got the coastal zone line on here already, but would be the most helpful for reference, for planners, for developers, for commissioners, for city council people, to have the line on here of the appealable area.
And I think Jim has just said, "We won't have that."
I heard what he said. So I wanted to make sure John, John heard that, too. And that's, you know, that's, can be with three hundred feet within the beach, or up to the first parallel highway.
There is a map like that, that the Coastal Commission will give us, and then we'll put it in the IP. But we don't have it yet, so we can't, we couldn't put it there.
Okay, well, that would be my suggestion, to make sure to...
But it is a good idea. We need to have that map.
Yeah, it would make it a lot easier.
Put it in the right book, I agree with you, Jim.
Okay, so that was that. And then, our next one's at two-forty-one.
Okay, so then I have, yeah. This confused me when I was going back and forth between the old version and this version. It seemed like there were things that weren't in the old version, but then they were deleted. You know, they were struck through.
They moved them.
So, it just seemed confusing to me. So, just, you want to, just...
Which page are you on?
Two-twenty. And I didn't, it was, it was kind of a, I didn't mark by paragraph by paragraph, but that section under the automobile-related land uses and the visitor-serving land use tourism, can you just, just check that and make sure that that wasn't added by mistake or struck by mistake, or is it supposed to be there?
Everything that has been struck and through has, has been deleted. Because we have so many drafts that we've gone through, it's extremely hard to tell.
I bet.
What has happened unless I comb through the last section. It's, it's very difficult. So it's likely that this was struck through and tracked changes, and then was incorporated or just made it through this section. But everything that has a strike through is intended to be deleted. So, it just may have been a situation where...
It got added back in.
It got added back in.
Previous deletion, and it got added back in on this.
Okay.
But still remained with the strike through, so.
All right. So, it shouldn't have appeared in the last version, and it accidentally appeared in this version. So, we shouldn't, we, it doesn't need to come back. It's just gonna be deleted.
Correct.
I have a, I have a question on two-nineteen, the visitor-serving commercial district overlay. I thought we'd agree to some verbiage at the end of this overlay, from the last one we had, that this overlay is contained exclusively within the coastal zone and some areas immediately adjacent, contiguous with the coastal zone. I think we're, words we agreed to add in, and somehow they might not have made it.
What page, so I can call it?
Page two-nineteen, visitor-serving commercial district overlay.
I think there, I do recall the discussion being about this, and it was my recollection, I could be wrong, that this land uses, or this overlay, that the name is gonna be changed in the general plan as well, and I could be wrong on that, but...
Oh, really? What's it gonna be changed to?
Just for consistency between the LUP and the general plan, and to have it, have an overlay that is called two different things may just add to confusion.
What's in the general plan? I didn't think we had any.
The general plan is just the pedestrian overlay.
The pedestrian overlay?
Yes.
Okay, but then the visitor-serving district overlay paragraph that we have before us tonight, versus what I wrote in from my old report that I kept, you know, or changed, we had added, I thought, an additional sentence to the end. This overlay is contained exclusively within the coastal zone and some areas immediately adjacent slash contiguous with the coastal zone. The way we were trying to define, make sure this visitor, commercial district overlay, however we end up finally saying it is...
Then it didn't apply to the other commercial areas.
It didn't apply anywhere else outside the line they give us, you know, so to speak.
Yeah, we discussed, we did discuss that. I think we might have missed this one.
You want my page to keep on this one?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, and so then the next, Bonnie has two-forty-one. Anybody have anything before that? Okay.
Well, on LU sixty?
Can we just hold, pause just for one second, and make sure that I get this information down? Okay, go ahead, Bonnie.
Unless I, unless I missed it somewhere, on two-forty-one, LU sixty, and it goes on over to two-forty-two as well. Do we need to add another provision for SEQA? As in paragraph F, shall implement SEQA mitigation measures.
The only thing I can think of is if, if there aren't mitigation measures required.
Unless not required, or you've still made exemption.
This is under conservation and sustainability. All development has to comply by state law with SEQA.
Okay, one of our writers had been concerned about inclusion of SEQA, and so that's the reason I brought that up.
So, this particular standard has to do with conservation and sustainability. SEQA's broader than that, so I don't know if it really belongs in this particular location.
Could we go back to...
John, did we skip over you?
We went quickly, yeah. In this new version here on page two-dash-thirty-three, LU twenty-one, a visitor-serving commercial uses. I kind of like this very strong wordage here that was different than I think before, like, "Prevent," let's see.
Three, two-dash-thirty-one?
Two-dash-twenty-one, two-dash-thirty-three is the page, and then...
And then LU twenty-one.
We got like, "Shall," and it's very strong. I wrote down a note, "Very strong, watch out, are we really hurting ourselves here?" But, "visitor-serving commercial uses and other types of new commercial development as private land suitable for visitor-serving. These uses shall enhance public opportunities to the Pope Reveration. Shall have priority over general commercial development in the BSCD overlay." Do we really want that language that strong? I mean, there's...
Whose change was this?
I know, it's just kind of... Page two-thirty-three, LU dash twenty-one. So, the note to myself is...
Yeah, because if it's not required, that, that does seem really stringent.
You know, there's a lot of...
Because...
Priority visitor-serving commercial uses over other types of new commercial development. As private land suitable for visitor-serving, I mean, I think we're...
Do you want "should" in there?
I think we're really very strong in that.
Unless, unless we're required to have that, because that seems really restrictive.
I mean, we're trying to find this whole overlay to make Coastal Commission happy with, with all this stuff, but I don't think we ought to go overboard and tie our hands with it.
I think, I think we put "should" in, and if they want to, because they, I know that this is a hot-button item for them, but I think it's fine to put in "should," and if they require us to change it, and it's a big deal, then, you know, we can cross that bridge when we need to.
Well, we're trying to get, like, in the current zoning change downtown, where the latest council direction was somehow we could make, we could convert things from from commercial to residential and back and forth, and so this could preclude override that.
Okay, good catch, John.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a question, an issue on two-forty-one. And again, it's wordsmithing, and it's LU fifty-nine, vacation rentals. It says here, "The city shall conditionally allow." The city council is currently considering vacation rentals along with sober rentals, sober living, and instead of "shall," we really should not be binding their hands here. It should say, "The city may conditionally allow," and let the policy decision by the city, not by us. So that should be changed there, John, to "City may conditionally allow," because I don't believe the Coastal Commission requires cities to do vacation rentals, considering Santa Monica, considering Huntington Beach, considering some coastal cities now in San Diego that are actually prohibiting them. So, I'm not saying prohibiting them, but I'm saying at least give the city council the opportunity to make a policy decision.
Good call. Okay, Bonnie, what's your next page?
Not till, chapter three.
Okay, does anybody have anything else in chapter two? Two-forty-three?
LU seventy-five, the title is Los Malinos, and it's a surf zone, for, and the subtitle, the main title is Los Malinos Focus Area. So it should...
Yeah, you're asking why there isn't a, the surf zone isn't...
I think we eliminated the surf zone, the only surf zone. Oh, no, that was for, we struck that out.
The surf zone, I think we put in later, but this, this is the Los Malinos Focus Area, two-point-four-point-nine on two-dash-forty-three, but LU seventy-five, the title of it, is Los Malinos and the Surf Zone.
So since we took the surf zone focus area out for LU ninety-nine, that should just say, it should just say Los Malinos, because the surf zone isn't in the coastal zone, so there's no reason to mention it.
Yeah, I think we just eliminate in the surf zone.
Okay, all right.
We don't know, the line touches the curve.
I don't know, ironic, isn't it?
We don't know, the line touches the curve, or it's fifty feet wide.
All right, anything else in chapter two, Don?
No, there were a lot of, like you mentioned, strikeouts that were not in the original thing and throughout this whole chapter.
Yeah, it was confusing.
There's flexibility here.
Yeah. Well, we'll just have to see the final draft, I think, when you...
John just needs to catch up with the provisions that come in at different times.
Yeah.
That's the base, just baseline something, yeah.
John, do you dream about this document?
They're not dreams.
They're nightmares. Okay, so, chapter three. Bonnie, what's your first page?
Mine's three-six.
Three-six. Anybody have anything before three-six? Okay, take it away, Bonnie.
Okay, that's just a figure that needs to be improved. But on three-seven, where it says, "Area A, Estrella North, access point one and two," insert the word "public" before "access." It's really important to distinguish public from private. And as you go through all of these figures with the diagrams describing them, some of them are public and some of them are private. So if someone is coming in here and looking up something, it should say right away whether it's public or private, and that's an easy thing to do. And the other thing going forward through...
Hold on just a sec, did you get that, John? It's, everybody's in agreement about that? That seems like a good clarification.
If you could please...
Yeah, it is.
So I'll just go through them quickly, and, and then the other suggestion for all of these is, a lot of times you have the text, for example, let's look on page three, you've got the text, and it's all talking about Capistrano Shores Mobile Home Park here. But the diagram with it, which your eye naturally goes to, especially if you're on your tablet or in your iMac or whatever it is, you're gonna be thinking, "This is the diagram you're supposed to be looking at," but it isn't. That figure three-four goes to the text paragraph on three-seven. So, if you could please think about putting the diagram with the text, and most, all of them will fit, except for one has a little bit more, but if you adjust the font just a little bit on the one item, I forget which one of these, then it will fit. And then people using their devices will be able to see the whole thing, and they won't have to have two pages up on going, going forward backward. What? Okay, and so, that brings us to Pochee Beach, and then on to page three-nine, figure three-five. On top of the figure, I think we forgot to include the word "mobile home park." It just says "mobile park." So up at the figure three-five, all the text has "mobile home park" when it's, so just insert...
Is that a legal description, John? Is it supposed to be mobile home or mobile?
It's not, it's "mobile home park" inside the other text.
I think, I think we just replicated the language from the previous draft, so if we wanna, if we wanna add that, then I don't think we have to...
Because those things aren't mobile.
Either add it or take it off.
Bonnie, you're gonna be giving him your list, are you not?
Yes, and so most of these...
She provided a very...
Oh, she did, okay, good.
I'll be, I'll be rolling.
And so, and it's the same thing, it's as on the list, insert "public," where "public." But the other thing that came up is, and I caught it, because I turned the pages, connecting the text with the image, there are more access points than are accounted for in this. So we're gonna have to change the numbering a little bit to be consistent with the way you're doing it for all of them. So in other words, let's see where the numbers started getting off for the access points.
Well, why don't we just direct staff to check to make sure that the access point numbering is correct? I think that might be...
Well, okay. It starts in, on three-thirteen, where we get to area C, and it says access point seven to twelve, but it really should be seven to thirteen, because there's another access point that got accounted for on one of the diagrams. So, there's actually, you're gonna wind up with twenty access points, but this only accounts in here for twelve. So I won't belabor the time on, on it, but they need to go...
Twenty, minus twelve?
Yeah.
What is the thirteenth of that?
Well, area D would be access point three through eighteen, and then you'd have to modify by counting your access points. You're just gonna have to spend the time and look at your diagrams, because this will have to be changed, points fourteen through twenty.
Are you saying that there are access points coming down to the physical access points that aren't listed in any of these documents?
That's right, that's right. Some of the text says access point.
But where, which accent point, access points are not being listed in the document?
Okay, if you must. Okay.
You're the one who said that there was missing accent points.
The Boca one has two, and it's only counted as one because it's Boca.
That's right, well...
And that's the way it is in the existing LCP, and so we...
Insert, let's see.
I don't think it needs to be, you can just say, "Access point both at A and B."
And then you're saying D, where's D? The D is also an access point, where's that?
Okay, yeah, so, um, access point, um, on three seventeen, La Boca. Um, insert the word private before access. And as there are two private access po, points shown on the related image, um, then the, I, in my opinion, the title should be changed to private access points eleven and twelve, not just eleven. There's two shown on there. And, um, so then the next one, the, on Lost Winds, on three seventeen, you would start with access point twelve, Lost Winds. And there is, where that, that would have to be changed now to access point thirteen, because there were two on, on the diagram before.
And Jim, you're saying that historically, um, we've counted that as one, because there's one entrance to, uh, to Boca up at the top?
The same with State Park, there's two access points down the block, or you only count it as one access point from State Park?
Okay, um...
I think an entrance is different than an access point.
I'm, I'm fine the way that it is. I think it's, it's all on the diagram, so...
Okay, well, I made my point, look it over and see what you think.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your thoroughness.
Yeah, don't want to miss one. Thank you.
Okay, anything else in chapter three?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, on three twenty, three thirty-two, where it talks about private beaches. This is one of the things that, um, with the Co, the Coastal Act, an, an understanding, um, some people have a hard time understanding this, but the, there isn't a beach that's private. The public owns from the mean high tide seaward on all the beaches.
Right.
And so, um, and we have low tide twice every four, twenty-four hours. So this, so you have low tide, the ocean moves out, it's dry, you can walk on it. And you should, the public is allowed to walk on these areas, even if the, um, the area from the mean high tide landward is private. And so I would suggest, uh, changing private beaches, change that to private beach areas, because you're trying to portray that it's a private community and, and so forth. But it's not correct to say that the beach isn't, is all private. So you cover yourself.
But I think we define that, um...
Yeah, and it says right here, public access is allowed seaward of the mean high tide line at all times to provide lateral access along the beach, so...
So it's not a private beach, it's a private beach area.
And that's what it says.
But she's saying make it private area.
Private beach area.
Private area instead of private beach.
And, um... And then, um...
I think the common understanding of it is private beach, unless we need a legal distinction.
People aren't going to get it.
What is the coastal, what's the terminology for the Coastal Commission, though?
I disagree, I think normal people will get what a private beach is, you know, it's like, that's sand in front of that house.
John, what's the terminology that, uh...
We have to go back what the Coastal Commission defines.
And if you're not clear, then why don't we put that as...
Yeah, I'm not clear, I can, I can follow up with them.
What did you look?
That's what it is.
If, it doesn't bother me to add areas instead of private beaches. And then, I, I understand there's a, because the distinction is that on that beach, there's a public area and there's a private area.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think that's fine.
The beach is private.
We'll check to make sure there's nothing wrong with it, and if there isn't, we'll just add it.
Okay.
It's okay with everybody.
Um, and so, let me see. On, uh, page three thirty-four, line eleven, last word, it's just a simple edit. Um, you left off part of the word, edit L-E-V-E to read level.
Mm-hmm.
L-E-V-E, that's no big deal. Okay, and then, um...
Do you see that, John?
Line eleven.
It's on the...
Okay, Bonnie has a very detailed, um...
Yeah, in detail, so...
I, I appreciate that, Bonnie.
It's one of those retentive things, genetic, I think. Okay, and, um...
So the next one is, um...
Three thirty-four.
Okay.
First paragraph, line seven, oh, insert the word public, um, level, I'm sorry. And then three thirty-four, same page, Cypress Shores Cove Beach, modify the first sentence to read access to the beach area. Uh, land to the mean high tide line is limited to the residents. So you know that part is limited to the residents. The beach isn't, isn't limited to the regi, the, the whole beach is not limited to the residents. Just the beach area, landward of the mean high tide line.
Where exactly is this, is it the Cypress Shores paragraph?
Yes, three thirty-four Cypress Shores Cove Beach. Access to the...
Oh, at the very bottom.
Yeah. To the beach area.
Beach area is what my one, you're saying?
From, yes, landward of the mean high tide line is limited to the residents. Because you can walk in there as long as you walk in laterally. But you can't, you know, you can't go through their residential gate to get to the beach. There's a big difference between beach area and, and beach, so...
Okay, next one?
And that's all I have. You guys are...
Some on three thirty-six?
Oh, three forty-eight, did you have one at three thirty-six?
Yeah, community events.
Mm-hmm.
Same community holds a variety of community events during the year, which include Earth Day, art shows, and then further down there it says art shows again, there's kind of duplication, just eliminate.
Oh, okay.
Art shows twice.
Do you see that, John? In the underlined area?
Three thirty-six, the underlining on community...
I got a little overzealous with art shows, I guess.
Yeah.
Three forty, paragraph two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for our show.
You know?
Yeah.
Okay, and your next one is three forty-eight?
Yes, and, um, paragraph two, um, let's see. Me, I was wondering if we should have a new PUB provision here, because it comes up, um, a lot. And, um, to say something like, it's actually in here, but it doesn't, it's not separated out to have its own, um, provision. And it would be, uh, something like new residential development requiring public view access. And then it, and then it goes, follows with, where residential development of greater than twenty units, da-da-da-da. So in other words, they're required to do something if this new development is going in, if the, if it's not feasible to, to provide a public access. Then, um, public view access is, is an alternative.
So you just want to put a subhead, so this is easy, easy to identify.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, she wants to put, you know, change the numbering and put, you know, pub...
Just add it sometime.
Yeah, add another number there, and so it's, so it's specific to view access, so people understand that can scan for that, or skim for that.
Now, the poll, the paragraph below that, would that be, also be included in, in the, the new policy that would be identified as PUB forty-eight? Would all be...
Yes, I, I believe so, I just skimmed it quickly, but Bonnie, is that your intention?
Um, you'd have a new pub, so you, you could have this be pub forty-nine, or...
But the two paragraphs between where she's suggesting insertion, she's, um, what, just review them and make sure you think that it's appropriate to have them under that heading?
Right.
Since it's getting later and we're not as acute.
And if you're too tired, you don't have to do chapter four.
Can I go back to page three forty, quickly, please? She's going quickly here. Under roadway system, pub PUB six.
PUB six?
Yeah, PUB six, page three forty.
Three forty? Wait.
Yeah, page three dash forty.
Mm-hmm, and then which PUB six, which one?
Yeah, number C, you eliminated, comply with it, da-da-da-da-da, which...
OCTA.
Which came from our general plan, the whole paragraph, which is referred to in our mobility element. I was wondering why it was eliminated, because it's there and it's in there and it's part of our general plan, so...
We eliminated that because of the, the references to the outside agencies.
The references were what?
To the outside agencies, um, and their requirements, the ma, uh, like the master plan of our tier-oral highways, measure N.
We discussed this in the last meeting, because otherwise you would have to update it when their, um, requirements.
That's fair, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Bonnie, your next one is where?
This one, chapter four.
Okay, I think Don has some in chapter three, do you know?
No, no, I think we're... I think I'm pretty fine on page, chapter three, I think we already, I thought we'd already done chapter four.
We did, we, this is just going through for anything that, like, um, or Bonnie, or anything that we think, um, might have been changed, um, in error or missing.
Or even added.
Yes.
Yes, yes, but I have something, or, do I?
For four, I have four-three as my first one.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's a minor thing, um, page four-three, second paragraph. It names, uh, common, um, vegetation, and then it puts the genus and species after that, but the lemonade berry got left out. And so in the first, uh, line, lemonade berry, if you want to, um, add, uh, Rhiz Antegrofolia after that in parentheses, like for all the other, um, named, um, vegetation in the paragraph, that would be con, consistent and very classy.
Thank you.
Also on four-three, just another edit, small edit, grass and herb dominated communities. Um, I just lose the hyphen after grass and then precede the acronym CNPS two oh oh eight by spelling out the department or agency.
Actually, the, the grass, the hyphen after grass should be there grammatically, yes.
Okay. And no hyphen after and?
No.
But you need grass dominated and herb dominated to that line?
Yes.
Oh, the title, okay.
I'm a very English teacher.
And then, um...
Never teach a doc. I just took a degree in it.
Can we get the words for the, um, CNPS on that line four, before the, it's...
For the acronym?
The acronym is in there?
Spell it out?
Yes. And you might want to put that in the definitions in the back. And if you want, you can share with, with me what that is, because I don't know offhand, um...
I'm guessing National Park Service?
And then, okay, how about, how about four-four, do you have four-four?
No, I have, mine, mine's at four thirty.
This is another simple edit, I'm sure Julia will ca, catch us quicker than me. Um, second paragraph, line three, and it starts with, I would, um, recommend removing eat the, the following, for the following reasons, and one. And just say, um, despite supporting mixed strands of eucalyptus trees, period. And the reason, uh, to get rid of for the following reasons, one, is you don't list reasons, one, reasons two, reasons three, you don't do, you meant to, but it didn't happen. And so then it starts a new sentence with unlike, a capital U, unlike the map, and then they go along this long paragraph, and it comes down to about line twelve or so. Uh, when it continues on, further, the Renani canyons, uh, ortho calaflia are indirectly affected by human presence. Anyways, it ties it in better, well, with the body of the long, uh, paragraph. So that would be my edit, what do you say, Matt and Jared?
I'm sorry, I'm following, uh, so your concern is that, um, it says one, and then do they, they list the others?
And there's no two.
There's no two?
No, no three.
Okay, why don't you just say for, for several reasons? Because there's, there's more than one reason, but they're not lit, but they're not enumerating them, is that the...
Yeah, because then it just goes on, blah, 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 for quite a, uh...
It's probably got listed out of a document.
Yeah, so just take the, so...
It should have been broken up into several paragraphs.
So just, so just cut it on the third line, put a period after trees?
Yeah.
And then...
And then, then you go unlike the map things, and blah, blah, blah.
And then cap the U for unlike. So take out for the following reasons, period, one, comma.
Next.
And then we've got another acronym on four-four, waters of the United States, including wetlands. On the second last line, we have USA CE. I don't know what that one is, offhand.
Why don't we just, I, we have, deal with acronyms a lot in, uh, the engineering text I use, and kind of the standard we have is to, um, spell it all out the first time.
In RWQV?
Excuse me, we spell it all, spell it all out the first time, and then in parentheses, use the acronym, and then after that, we're free to use the acronym, so that's just one possible approach.
And then as long as they're, as long as the acronyms are included in the definition section, that people can look them up.
Then we should be okay.
So I think, I think staff has that direction, so I don't think we need to go through the rest of them.
And that's it.
Okay, then Wayne, you had one?
Yes, on, uh, four dash thirty, RES dash three zero.
Four dash thirty.
For us, old, for us old timers that were here in the last century, you may remember, not only for offshore drilling, but also it was proposed for liquefied natural gas terminals, facilities on the coast, which of course horrified everyone, uh, around.
Wayne, you brought this up during the general plan review, and I think we updated. Didn't we, didn't we update this section to reflect those comments? Because I knew, because it, um, it was very important historical information that you provided.
Yes, yes, yes. So if, it needs to be consistent, though, I mean, here, with off, off liquefied natural gas facilities. We would not like to encourage them.
No.
Wayne, would you be okay just incorporating, um, that into this policy or creating a new policy for that?
Into the same policy, just add, look.
NR four point zero two, check it out. Where would that be? NR four point zero two.
And it covers both offshore drilling and...
Liquid natural gas.
Just liquid natural gas.
Yes, both.
So maybe just take that wording?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at that, and if, if it looks, covers everything, I'll insert it here.
Okay, anything else to chapter four? All right, then that completes our review tonight, and I think it's impressive, it is not yet nine-thirty.
Yeah.
So if there's nothing else from staff, perhaps, um...
Oh.
I wanted to give this to you from Al Cullen, and it's the ordinance that has a sixteen-foot height limit and the setbacks. It may affect the table, it may not. The table two-one has a height, uh, limit of twenty-five for everything, but in Chirkless, mostly it's, um, sixteen feet. So here it is for you, and, um...
That's an ordinance, or that's their, their, their...
It's ordinances, so, and setbacks too, but you're not using them now, you're saving them for the IP, so, thank you.
And I'm assuming we're to take our books with us on, um, again, so that we can keep tracking, right? Okay.
I'll, I'll pick a new color for the changes.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that, John, the table of contents and all that stuff will be updated this time, because it's way out of date, too.
It will, it will.
Okay, and the page...
Oh, we need to continue this, I'm sorry. So we're, our instructions are to continue it to, what?
My goal would be to do this before July, and he wants to go on a vacation to Europe with his girlfriend, of all things. Well, let's, let's vote to see if that should be allowed.
That's not allowed.
This is a bit of training right here.
Uh, I'm just going to Skype in, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Well, I was thinking, um, well, we'll check with your calendars to see what's convenient, but I, I was thinking that the off week, we, we meet the seventeenth, so the next week would be, you know, if you wanted to do it Wednesday, or, like we did, or Tuesday, I don't know what works best for everybody.
Is that going to give staff and the city attorney sufficient time to work out all of the, you know, massive, um, requests that, uh, couple of yours has? I, I don't, I don't know if it would be worth us meeting before you guys work all that out.
Well, I think that, um, we're, I want to meet before we have any new planning commissioners and run somebody else brand-new through this, and we're so that close, so I'd like to do it that week. And I talked to the attorneys, and if I give them the deadline, then I'll just have to work it out before then. So I think the twenty-fourth would be good, if you wanted to go as late as the thirtieth, we could do that, too.
Yeah.
And I'll check my calendar. Fourth or thirtieth, or have Kim send out the usual email to check calendars and...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's better than when we're all a little foggy.
Speak for yourself.
But, so that'll, that'll be, then I guess we should continue it to the seventeenth, because then we can continue... Then I guess we should continue it to the 17th because then we can continue it again when we all check our calendars because...
The 24th is also D R S C.
Yeah.
Well, we could do the 23rd as well, so we'll, let's, since we don't have a date.
The 23rd is the night before D R S C.
I can't, I can't, I can't do the 23rd. I'm in an all-day photo shoot. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the model.
Are we invited to look?
Well, yes, but we're shooting drainage catheters, so I don't know that you want to volunteer to be the model for that. So, I'm sorry, I went into such detail. I'm busy on the 23rd.
Good job, lighting this place.
Thanks for sharing with us.
Great job, lighting this place.
All right, so let's, let's continue to the 17th, it sounds like. And then, as Don said, have Kim in her efficient manner, try to get us all to agree on something.
Right, okay.
So...
Then I'll move we continue this item until our meeting on June 17th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, good work, everybody.
Finish this off, thank you.
We are, wait, we are, we are done.
Bonnie, thank you for putting that...
Sorry, sorry. Sorry, we need to adjourn the meeting.
Well, I, I do have a quick report of commissioners and staff. We did meet, the mobility committee did meet. We discussed mostly the circulator, the trolley, potential for the trolley. The representative from the, her name is...
Architectural Guild.
Well, he was there, but also the representative from the, the, the general manager of the outlet malls was there. And they were, there's no promises made or anything, but there was a very positive sort of interaction in terms of, you know, having the trolley kind of start point be there and come down to North Beach and into the transit center and...
It's very encouraging.
Yeah, so it was, it was pretty encouraging. And the basic, I think the basic consensus was, let's do something, you know, simple and small that we feel is the highest probability of success because there's issues of, you know, how long can it be supported through OCTA and that sort of thing? And let's be successful with it, and then we'll expand it, you know, based on that.
To chime in, the OCTA has boarding rates and passengers per hour and all that stuff with their grant money that comes from Measure M two.
So if there's nothing else, then...
I, I have a driver control.
That can be arranged.
I just want to be the one who goes clang, clang, clang.
Coastal Commission Committee meets Thursday night, and we are going to review. Council approved a partial approval of the street sweeping program. We're going to review that program, the test program, to get data back to council. And also we have a guest speaker on, an expert from San Diego on sand replenishment. That's all.
And if there's nothing else, I'll move we adjourn to the study session to be held at 6:00 PM on June 17, 2015, in Council Chamber of City Hall located 100 Avenue, Pasadena, San Clemente, California.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.